Very good. Thank you, Scott. Well, good evening, everybody, and it is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. It is about 7:02 PM. And this is the City Council meeting for the City of Edina, Minnesota. This is a virtual meeting. If you wish to watch this meeting live, you can do it by watching it on Edina TV, Comcast Channels 813 or 16, Facebook.com/Edinamn, or at edinamn.gov/livemeetings. And then we'll all talk about making comment on particular matters during public comment in a moment. I'm going to call the meeting now to order. I have got some other things I've got to do from a housekeeping standpoint. There's a little script that I've been requested to read by staff before calling the meeting to order. And of course, this meeting is being held electronically to comply with the governor's stay-at-home order and under, I think Attorney Canus and we're under MSA 13D. And this helps ensure the safety of all of our residents and all of our staff and all members of the City Council. Staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices as we begin this meeting this evening. There's a few things that we need to cover for those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. There is no public hearing portion of the agenda this evening, so the public participation will be limited to the public comment portion of the agenda, and I'll cover that momentarily. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting the public input throughout our council correspondence technologies and web form, voicemail, and our engagement website, which is BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important that you know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally in terms of its weight, regardless of the way in which it was submitted. And so tonight, in community comment, which will be coming up momentarily, that'll be your only opportunity to speak to the council. That will allow you to speak. We will allow you to speak in that portion of the agenda about anything that is not otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. And of course, you'll have three minutes to speak. Manager Neil is our timekeeper. He's going to advise you when you have 30 seconds left. We'll start the timer when you start to speak on public comment. If you wish to call in for community comment, for public comment, call 1-800-374-0221. That's 1-800-374-0221. And the conference ID to get into the queue for the community comment is 8855334. 8855334. And as I mentioned before, you'll be given three minutes to speak, and our city manager will let you know when you're closing in the three-minute mark. Thanks in advance for your patience. As we work to conduct this meeting online, it's the second time we've done this, I think, for a city council in the history of the City of Edina. We're using different software types, constantly trying to improve our delivery of this virtual meeting. There's almost 20 people participating from their own homes. We're trying to make this possible. So we hope there will not be any technology issues, but if there are, rest assured, we'll do our best to fix them as quickly as we can. So now I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Ms. Allison to conduct roll call.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
Having completed the roll call, we're next going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you care to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise. You'll see a United States flag come up on the screen. And we'll leave you in the pledge as follows.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to modify the meeting agenda or City Manager Neil? Anything you wanted to change with respect to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown?
So moved.
Got a motion, then a second, I think, motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Brindle to adopt the meeting agenda as shown. All of our votes tonight will be by roll call vote. This requires a roll call, obviously. Ms. Allison, roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
The form of meeting agenda is approved. Next is community comment, and again, I'll make some remarks regarding community comment. This is the time when residents of our town can address us with something that's important to them and not otherwise on the agenda tonight or scheduled for a future public meeting. And again, to participate in community comment, you should call in now at 1-800-374-0221 with conference ID 8855334. That's 8855334. Press *1 to speak. An operator will then put you in the queue to speak, and you'll be muted until your turn, and then you'll be given three minutes to speak. And then make sure you remember to start by giving us your full name and street address so that we can have that for the record as well. As I mentioned before, Manager Neil will let you know when you're getting close to your three-minute time period, when that's set to lapse. All right. And then we'll be careful about moving on from community comment because we do have a slight delay with the broadcast. And so we'll wait a few minutes before moving on after the last speaker on community comment. So if you have anybody queued up for a community comment, would you please start that conversation?
Mayor, we do not yet have anyone on the line for community comment. I would recommend we stay on the line for another minute or so in case we have some delay.
Director Bennerott. Director Bennerott, why don't you let us know when you think it's time for us to proceed to the city manager's comments?
Your Honor, one moment, please. And I believe it's safe to move on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Manager Neil's process is that he will generally comment to any community comments that were made at the prior meeting, which was on April 7th. And I don't recall if there were any community comments made at that particular meeting or not, but Manager Neil...
We had no community comment at that meeting, so I don't have anything to add at this point.
Thank you, Manager Neil. Next, we have the consent agenda. And I know that I and several others sent emails to Manager Neil during the day about some of the matters that were on the consent agenda to get clarification. I think we've all been concerned about making sure that we're being especially careful during this particular pandemic about some of the spending that we might normally engage in. Do we want to be a little bit more cautious about some of these things in view of the fact that we don't know what's ahead of us? And we want to make sure that we have as much cash on hand and available. And of course, we've got some great advice from our staff on creating this budget stabilization fund, and there's a significant amount of money that's recommended for movement into that as part of the consent agenda this evening. And then there were some other items on the agenda as well. I think we all recognize that we also want to keep people working and get people back to work, and so you have this not tension necessarily, but this constant balancing in your mind as to, you know, what's appropriate to move forward on with respect to a particular project and what could we wait to do another day or wait to see if we should do it at all? And I think, Manager Neil, at least for my part, you've answered well those questions that I posited for you and have created comfort for me. I think that our staff is working hard to make sure that what gets on the agenda, whether it's a regular action item or a consent agenda item, is one that they think is appropriate for us to be dealing with, especially when it involves the expenditures of expenditure of monies of our taxpayers. So is there anyone, having said that, is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove a particular item from the consent agenda?
Yes. Yeah.
Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. You were reflecting, I believe, on Agenda Item C, and that would be the one that I'd like to pull on.
All right. Very good. With the exception of 6C, Roman 6C, is there any other matter that a council person wishes to remove from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of 6C.
So moved.
Member Fisher moves?
Yes.
Second.
Member Brindle, seconds. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Thank you. And now with respect to 6C, which was Resolution 2020-43, that would potentially authorize the transfer of monies into the Budget Stabilization Fund to help us through this coronavirus pandemic period. And Member Anderson, if you would pose your question?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's far more of a comment than a question. Simply just the nature of the, it's a large financial transaction, and the total here that we're moving into the Budget Stability Fund is about four and a quarter million. And it comes from a variety of sources, which I don't think it's necessary to specify them all. Some are larger, some are smaller, some come from reserve funds that have been available, some come from projects that where City Manager Neil felt that it was better to dedicate to the Stability Fund. And I just wanted to commend City Manager Neil, Assistant City Manager Schaefer, and Budget Director or Finance Director Oram, because I know that they worked hard on this. I know that they have spent a lot of time with it. And it's clearly the appropriate action taken at the right time. They're hard choices, and I just want to commend them on that. There may be others that want to comment as well, but I think it's great work and needed.
All right. Thank you, Member Anderson. Other comments on this particular item, which is Resolution 2020-43? I guess I would join Member Anderson in thanking our financial department and our city manager and Assistant City Manager as well in helping create the source of funds for this Budget Stabilization Fund. When I look at the monies that are going in there, one of the questions I had first was because we were putting general fund surplus amounts in there from 2016, 17, and 19, were we going to have enough of a reserve then in the construction fund from which it was recommended for moving? And Manager Neil sent a note back saying that we had approximately 8.5 million in the construction fund. This is going to reduce it to about 6.5 million, which, in the opinion of our city manager and our financial department, is still sufficient in terms of the amount of money in the fund for our approved expenditures in 2020. And then this also allows us to protect ourselves against any budget shortfalls caused by the pandemic this particular year as well. There were a couple of other sources of revenue that Member Anderson mentioned. There's some building maintenance money that we're going to be able to put in there, some Edinburgh Park Plaza funds, and then Manager Neil had mentioned the Parks on Age Program funding. And it all totals about 4.266 million, and I joined everybody on the council, I think, in thanking our staff for creating this fund to make sure that we are able to deal with any potential budget shortfalls caused by this pandemic. Member Anderson, would you care to move Resolution 2020-43?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Staunton, to authorize the transfer of funds as shown in Resolution 2020-43 into the Budget Stabilization Fund. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. That takes us to the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. We have just one matter in that portion of the agenda this evening, and that deals with Building Safety Month, which is designated as the entire month of May 2020. And that proclamation reads as follows. Whereas our city of Edina is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on our safety, on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, excuse me, buildings and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play. And whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by our National Voluntary Consensus Codes and Standards Developing Organization, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building and safety and fire prevention codes in the world. Whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquake, which according to a FEMA-commissioned study by the National Institute of Building Sciences provide $11 in future mitigation benefits for every dollar invested. And whereas safer buildings, safer communities, safer world is the theme for Building Safety Month 2020. Sponsored by the International Code Council, encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2020 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure the safety of our built environment and recognizes that the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses. Now therefore, the City Council, the City of Edina, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2020. See, there's a little error in the proclamation, Ms. Allison. It should be May 2020 as Building Safety Month in the City of Edina, and accordingly encourages our citizens to join with their communities and participate in Building Safety Month activities. Is there a motion to adopt the Building Safety Month proclamation designating May 2020 as Building Safety Month?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Fisher, second by Member Brindle with regard to the proclamation adopting Building Safety Month as May 2020. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland, it appears, excuse me, Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Aye.
We were not expecting David Fisher to join us to accept the proclamation, but it appears he is here tonight to accept the proclamation.
Yeah, well, thank you for noticing that. Member Fisher, or Mr. Fisher, welcome.
Thank you. And that's basically what I want to say to you guys. Thank you all, Mr. Mayor and members of the council for approving the proclamation for the Building Safety Month for May, the month of May of 2020. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for joining us. Good to see you.
I just wanted to tell you that even during this pandemic, Mr. Fisher and his team are hard at work. We've seen a lot of elements of our economic activity in this country and in our community suffer. But building in Edina is not one of them. They're doing brisk business down there. They're in the field. They're working with contractors, and you know, ultimately, all of that is for the purposes for public safety, right, to keep us keep us safe in structures and buildings all over the community.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to add that, you know, there are some cities out there that are, have kind of pulled back on keeping the construction going, and I know we're doing it in as safe a way as possible, but it is really a big deal for to keep construction going, to keep design going, all of that, to have our folks out there in the front lines doing this work. So I definitely want to commend Mr. Fisher and his staff for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. And...
Hard to see if we could, Mr. Fisher.
Comments as well.
Mr. Mayor, are you going to each reach your handout like you're shaking? Take a picture of the screen? Does that start to fit?
He'll give that.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, we got the virtual photo. All right. Thank you for joining us. And thank you for doing the work you're doing during this difficult time. And Manager Neil, I really appreciate you pointing out all the work they're doing down there to keep our town functioning. The second part of our Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda tonight involves a report on the work of our Race and Equity Department and our, I think, in part, the Human Rights and Relations Commission. And Heidi Lee, our Race and Equity Coordinator, is with us this evening to pass on this information to us, the summary report for the 2019 Race and Equity work. And Ms. Lee, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I just prepared a short report to give you an update of the Race and Equity work that's happening in the city. I will be sharing my screen to give you a PowerPoint presentation as well. Are you all able to see the screen? Yes.
Yes, I'm able to see it.
Okay. Perfect. So the, for this particular report, it's to provide you two purposes. One of the purposes is to provide a report on the racial equity work implementation plan, as well as to provide you an update of the strategy so that the work, the Race and Equity work is sustainable. So to give you a background, the Race and Equity Implementation Plan was approved in September of 2018. And so when I look at the the implementation plan, there was five themes that were on there. So 12 of the 59 work plan items were under the Accountability and Data Collection. Eight of those items were under City Facility. 14 of those were under Development and Policies, Enforcement of Policies. 11 of those were under Employee Training and Diversity, and then 14 of those were under Community Engagement and Communications. So really thinking about that, this implementation plan that was recommended by the Racial Equity Task Force had many different themes to be able to support. What does systemic change look like within city government? And so with that, of that, of the 59, there was actually 46 that had the tentative completion date or to be completed within 2019. So really thinking about the fact that with that implementation plan, it was a heavy lift in 2019. So you'll notice that in 2018, three of them were assigned, and three of those were completed. In 2020, there is tentatively three that are expected to be completed. In 2021, one item, and then six items have not been provided a date to be completed yet. So looking at this particular chart, you'll notice that there was, in 2019, eight of those items were completed. 12 of them are listed as continuous. So really knowing that there were some items that were technical, and then through research as well as conversation and process implementation, that it was going to be something that was going to be continuous throughout the longevity of the Racial Equity Implementation Plan. So for example, there is a community feedback group that has already been created, but there are also meetings more regularly. So that is something that will be continuous. Four of those items within 2019 have not been started yet, and 21 of those items are, have been started, but will continue into 2020. And one of those items has not been completed. So if you wanted more of a detailed detailed information of those items in 2019, I do provide a quarterly update of the work plan, which has been posted on the Race and Equity website or the city. So I do provide that update. And so this is one aspect of the Race and Equity Work Plan or the work that's being done in the city. The second part is really looking at what is a long-term strategy to ensure that there's sustainability in the Race and Equity Work Plan. And so when I think about the Race and Equity work, I also think about the successes that have occurred in my time. And so one of the things that I am most proud of is the Racial Equity Advancement Team, which is comprised of staff members who want to be able to engage the work as well as implement different processes within their department. And so it grew in 2019 from having eight to 15 folks that are from a wide variety of the different departments in the city. And then relationships are being built as well. And so for the Race and Equity work to continue, relationships are important, and so I am proud of that success. And lastly, it's training, to be able to provide professional development for all of the staff members. One of the successes is that it will continue in 2020. So in January, there was a City Council training, and then executive leadership from the city staff were also trained in this foundational training that we had. So that is a success, and that will be branched out to other staff members as the year continues. Really looking at the fact that with any sort of transformation, there are going to be challenges. And so some of the challenges that I have seen in my time are resources, and really thinking about to be able to interrupt and undo systemic policies that have created barriers, it takes time to be able to know what those look like. So that is a resource that provides, that has had some challenges, knowing that their staff members have different capacities and priorities within their work. And then the second challenge is systemic thinking. Systemic thinking, transforming from a technical piece of I have to be able to provide equity into how do we make sure that all of the different departments are understanding what their impact is when there is a decision that is being provided or a policy that will be in place. So really thinking about that, it's an entire system, and we're interconnected in the things that we do. And then going into advancing, how do we advance Race and Equity in 2020? It has been looked at, thinking about changing the way that we look at what Race and Equity work looks like, and so putting it in three different buckets of focus. So this long-term strategy is not just for 2020, but it is for the duration of the Race and Equity work so that it is sustainable and that it does build capacity within staff members. um, and that it does build capacity within staff members. So the focus, um, in 2020 is going to continue that, the, uh, foundational training, as well as providing other training that is within, um, the lens of, uh, gender equity, um, age, ability, and all of those things, because that does fall within the, the equity, um, umbrella. Um, and then the work plan support. So how is the work that has been, uh, put on the implementation plan continue? Um, and not just have it where it is a one-off, um, but there is a, it has a bigger reach. Um, so really looking at how is that, again, sustainable? Um, and then lastly, the last bucket of work is engagement. Uh, so to be able to ensure that, uh, folks, whether it is staff members or community members know what this work looks like, we have to be willing to engage. And so an example of engagement for staff and community is to, um, hopefully, once, uh, there is, uh, stay-at-home order is lifted, that we'll be able to have community conversations. Um, so having, engaging with folks of what does equity look like? What are some of the challenges? What are some of their needs in order to be able to move, uh, Race and Equity work in Edina forward? Um, so that is kind of the very high-level, um, information that has been occurring, um, in my time at, uh, the city. Um, are there any questions that you may have?
It was, that was well done. Thank you. Um, with regard to the intentionality that in the, in the terms of the work ahead that you're going to be focusing on in 2020, do you feel like you're getting the kind of, um, um, su- support that you, that you need, uh, with respect to the training, uh, those development opportunities, professional development opportunities, work plan support and engagement? Or are you trying to do all this on your own?
Um, I, I feel like I have support, um, with that. Um, I do, you know, one of the, the successes that I had mentioned is being able to build relationships. And so it's not, uh, it's not just me doing the work. There's many people that under, that I've had conversations with, um, that understand what that, what racial equity work looks like in their lens, as well as how does that translate into their professional, uh, their professional work. And so it is incremental change, um, you know, when, when you're trying to, when I'm trying to build relationships. Um, and while many people want to be able to, um, to, to run to the finish line and have this work done, it is ever-evolving. Um, and so I, I think of it as a marathon of how do we make sure that there's sustainable change and that has impact? And so, um, there has, there has definitely been support in this, this work.
Right. Good. Thank you. Uh, questions or comments regarding the report? Questions for Ms. Lee?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment.
Yes, Member Stotin.
I just wanted to commend Ms. Lee on the presentation and on her work. Um, I'm especially impressed with the, the notion that you were just articulating, Heidi, about a journey rather than a destination. And I've often thought of it as kind of concentric circles that you build by developing relationships, and then those folks develop other relationships, and eventually you convert a whole culture. And so I appreciate that this is a marathon, not a sprint, and applaud you for continuing to slug away. And I'm really encouraged by your description of the, um, number of people who are coming to this work, uh, volunteering to help lead this work. And that's a really good sign. So thank you for your work.
Yeah. Well said, Member Stotin. Uh, anyone else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Lee, for that update.
Thank you.
That concludes our work in the, uh, Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. We're gonna now move on to the, uh, Reports and Recommendations portion of the agenda. We've got three matters to deal with there. And, uh, Chad Milner, our Director of Engineering, has the first matter there, which is Resolution 2020-41, uh, a potential, uh, resolution adoption dealing with parking restrictions on France Avenue between West 55th Street and, uh, the Croustown Highway 62. And Director Milner, are you there?
I am, Mayor. Mayor, Members, Council. Thank you. Um, so on my screen, I got a present, little presentation here, and then we'll get to the resolution. So we're looking at a no-parking resolution for the France Avenue Safety Improvements. So this is France Avenue between 55th Street and approximately Highway 62. And the concern, the historical concern from residents was cars passing in the parking lanes. And then earlier this year, we had a major incident. There was a vehicle that went around a bus, school bus with the stop sign out, or went and passed around the bus at that time, through the parking lane, and hit a high school student. So since that time, the city and the county have really been working together to try to see if we can improve the safety along that corridor. So we, we shared and we split responsibilities. So the county, they collected some data on this illegal passing maneuver in the parking lane, and in a single day, they saw more than 100 occurrences of this illegal passing in the parking lane. They've developed pavement marking plans. And if the no-parking resolution is approved tonight by the council, they will do the installation of the pavement markings and also no-parking signs along this corridor. The city, we agreed to increase the police presence out there since that incident. We conducted parking counts. We wanted to see how many people were actually u- using those parking lanes. And the average for that whole corridor was about 2% to 5%. Very few people parking along that corridor. There was one location at one occurrence that got a high of 18%. We created an engagement plan, and we used Better Together Edina to gather comments from residents that lived along that corridor. We collected those engagement comments, and a lot of the results and comments we heard from, uh, were, uh, regarding removing the parking. So two areas in specific that were, all the comments came from condos near 54th Street. They were really concerned about losing the parking there on France because they have limited parking within their condos. So we did work with the county and adjusted the lane markings to keep the parking in that location. And then along the Jewish Cemetery, the east side of France, there was some concerns with losing all the parking, especially for funerals that occur where they need more parking, they can provide it on-site. So we worked with the county again to allow parking along that east curb line adjacent to, to the Jewish Cemetery. This is a couple graphics. Uh, the top graphic is what's out there today. So there's two 12-foot drive lanes, northbound, southbound, and then 10-foot parking lanes on each side. So when a vehicle's trying to make a left-hand turn, waiting for cars coming the other direction, that's where you get those vehicles passing, doing that illegal passing maneuver in that 10-foot parking lane. The section on the bottom is the new pavement markings that we'd love to work with the county to get completed. And what that does is create a center turn lane. So now cars making left-hand turns have a place to wait that won't stop the traffic from going northbound or southbound by them. So they won't have to perform that illegal passing maneuver. There'll be small shoulders, about five feet on each side. Um, and this would be the section we would propose from 55th Street to nearly Highway 62. So the county is looking for formal support in a no-parking resolution, recommending approval of that resolution here tonight, 2020-41. And this would remove parking along a majority of France Avenue between 55th Street and Highway 62. We would keep that parking along that Jewish Cemetery on the east side of France Avenue, but we'd remove the remainder of the parking along that corridor. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, uh, Member Brendel.
Thank you. Chad, would you go back to your page five of your presentation? Thank you. So looking at these two, uh, are we to assume that the lower one then is the new striping that, that you're, the, you're considering with the county?
Correct.
Okay. So talk to me on the right. You've got a five-and-a-half-foot lane with a car sitting there. Is that a parking lane? What is that?
That is the area just by the Jewish Cemetery. Where we're gonna allow parking on those very infrequent times when they have funerals where they're overparked and need that section of France. Otherwise, there'll be no parking along these shoulders. They'll basically act almost like bike lanes if people are gonna bike down France Avenue. And then we have plans in the CIP to build a sidewalk, finish some of these sidewalk gaps. And when we go by that Jewish Cemetery in two to five years, we will try to push that curb line out another two feet to get a seven-foot parking lane at that time.
Okay. All right. It just seemed very narrow to me. So if there is a plan to expand it in the future, then, um, then I'm okay with that. Looking at the other side, um, so there's a buffer in that, and I, and I can't see, I'm assuming that's a width of five-and-a-half feet as well. So Scott Denfeld, your little box is, is covering part of this graphic. Um, so I'm looking at the fact that, ah, that helps. Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
There. Um, so I'm looking at the fact that she is walking, um, on a portion of sidewalk that is directly adjacent to what could be considered the roadway. And that buffer is part of the roadway in my mind. Um, is it possible to put some greenery and basically switch the, the sidewalk with the six feet of greenery and put a boulevard along France Avenue?
That's our long-term hope as we start to build out sidewalks. As we do sidewalks, we always try to put a boulevard in. So the existing sidewalk on the west side is built right on the curb line. That was another reason we wanted these five-foot buffers, keep the vehicles away from the sidewalk as much as possible. So there will be a, a lane marking there. Um, when we build the one on the other side over here, that's where we want to get a boulevard and then a sidewalk. So we're not touching any sidewalk stuff with this project. We're trying to just make the roadway itself safer for vehicles.
Sure. With a future hope of, of handling the pedestrian parts of this, uh, at that time. Okay. Super. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Member Brendel. That was a good question. Um, others? Anyone else have, uh, question, comment? Member Fisher?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I, I like the fact that you were willing to, to work with a little bit of the fuzziness on, you know, like a parking lane that's not quite a parking lane in front of the cemetery and some of those things. Um, I think those are good things to do. Streets can serve multiple purposes, and people just gonna have to drive a little more carefully when there's a funeral going on. Um, but I, I think it's good. So thank you.
Other questions or comments regarding this matter? I joined Member Fisher and, and, and also commenting that I think this was really quite a good piece of work, and, um, I'm sure for those residents that were, uh, involved in the neighborhood where the, uh, terrible incident occurred where the car passed the school bus on the right-hand side on the west side of the street, uh, going at a high rate of speed and hit that young girl. Terrible thing. So I, I applaud the county and applaud our staff for working on this, uh, to try to create a safer situation out there. Um, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-41, which, uh, would ban the parking of motor vehicles on both sides of France Avenue between West 55th Street and 6224 France Avenue South, except along the east side of France Avenue between West 55th Street and West 57th Street? No more.
Second.
Member Stotin moves. Member Brendel seconds. Further discussion with regard to Resolution 2020-41? All right. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Anderson? You are muted. Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Stotin?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. I'm just watching Sharon now. I've gotten in the habit of looking at her to see if she's looking up to see if I really did answer. So, thank you. All right. We've got, uh, the second matter in this portion of the agenda. Uh, Jessica Wilson has this, our Water Resources Coordinator, and this involves, um, approval, potential approval of a public participate, participation plan for the Morningside, uh, flood infrastructure project that we've been talking about for the past couple of years. So, uh, Ms. Wilson, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Before I introduce the topic, I understand council received a request to table this item as it relates to a future anticipated street reconstruction in the Morningside neighborhood and the Street Funding Task Force. Staff sees this as related but separate from that discussion and recommends continuing with engaging the neighborhood on exploring flood risk reduction opportunities. Staff is asking council to consider two actions tonight. First, to approve the Public Participation Plan for the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project. And second, to approve the request for purchase for preliminary engineering and engagement professional services. At its April 7th meeting, the council adopted the Flood Risk Reduction Strategy. That strategy noted four areas of work: infrastructure, regulation, outreach and engagement, and emergency services. This project would be the first to engage a neighborhood and plan in flood infr- infrastructure under the new strategy. The Public Participation Plan provided in your packet describes the decision to be made, stakeholders and their roles, schedule, and the promise to the public. Better Together Edina is the cornerstone of our engagement strategy, and that will be where all of our, uh, process and participation and archiving of the process takes place. We've learned some lessons through the 58th Street Roadway Reconstruction Project process. Uh, first, engagement is messy work. If you can imagine a squiggly line drawn on a piece of paper, that's what engagement looks like. And we are ready to embrace the squiggle and lean in to the squiggle. Second, communication is key. Routine updates on where we are in the process and how to participate, lend of transparency, and build trust. Clearly communicating decisions that have already been made is important for stakeholders. And then also, when residents, staff, and council openly share information, it can only improve the process. The consent agenda for tonight's meeting included the City Council Code of Conduct, which specifically identifies working with the community during an engagement process. And this is what it says. "If we meet with a resident during a planned engagement process, we will notify the resident that we are there to listen and encourage them to participate through the established process to engage. We will ensure that staff receive the feedback provided to us." And we see staff's role as, uh, playing a role in connecting the desires of the residents with the decisions of the council. The other thing I want to mention before I pause for questions is how we plan to do engagement in the time of COVID. As of right now, we have a digital-first approach. So meetings and presentations will be done virtually. We recognize that access to virtual engagement can be a barrier, and we will work to engage people through print media, direct mail, neighborhood groups, other communication channels. The process design could be modified to accommodate in-person meetings if the circumstances around the pandemic change to allow for that to occur without compromising health and safety. We will work with the city, uh, we will work with, uh, stakeholders to replicate, uh, online, print, and in-person opportunities as much as possible. We've given careful consideration to access. It's important that we have the, that everyone has the ability to participate, and to us, that means eliminating physical, cultural, language, and process barriers to the best of our ability. On our team, our staff team, we have our Community Engagement Coordinator, our Race and Equity Coordinator, Heidi Lee, who you heard from earlier this evening, which she is such an asset, by the way. Her coaching has already shaped our process design. And then also Tom Swenson, the Parks Assistant Director, to provide that park's perspective since we're adjacent to Weber Park in that neighborhood. So with that, I'll pause now and, and take any questions that you have.
Questions for Ms. Wilson or comments? Ms. Wilson, you might, you did address an issue, I think, that, uh, all of us, uh, recognized that came in from one of our residents was, uh, is there a need to table this to coordinate it with the, uh, potential future street reconstruction plan? And, 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 uh, you took that on right at the beginning of your presentation and said, let's keep going. And I'm wondering, uh, why you, why you took that position? What's the reason for that?
Yeah, I, this, I see this project as a planning exercise. So we're not authorizing any construction with this planning project. And then we've heard from some, uh, stakeholders in the neighborhood that they're really eager to learn more and get some, some flood risk reduction activity in that neighborhood. So not only is this an infrastructure planning project, it's a good way to engage and, and reach out with people in that neighborhood in one of the neighborhoods that has the greatest flood risk.
Good. Thank you for that. That's helpful.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Does that, Member Stotin?
Yes. If I could chime in with a few questions or comments?
Yes, please.
First, um with respect to that point, um I couldn't agree more with Ms. Wilson. I mean, if anything, I think there's been a high level of frustration from folks in that neighborhood that we've moved too slowly on this. And the notion of delaying it for another couple of years, I think would make people just nuts. So I'm I'm in favor of moving ahead and continuing to do this good work. I think we've made a lot of progress, but we need to we need to keep moving forward on it because it's a critical, it's a critical issue. And then I wanted to make a couple of observations about the the um the engagement plan. One was the one that Ms. Wilson identified, which was uh the City Council's role and the first uh bullet item under that, that we will share feedback received directly from shareholders with the project team in a timely manner so that all have the same information. It's good for us all to remember that. It's easier said than done, but I will, for one, make an effort to be uh to be diligent on that. And then on the same kind of lessons learned theme, I would uh skate down to the point of decision criteria, where we talk about what's in scope, what's out of scope, and decisions already made. And I will be the first to say that it looks to me like among decisions already made is a dedicated bike facility along the east side of Grimes Avenue will be installed during construction. So that will have to be said many, many more times, but hopefully people will understand that that is not part of the scope is whether we're gonna have a bike facility there or not. So I think it's gonna be critical if we talk about the lessons learned from the 58th Street project, that we be even more deliberate about what the scope is and what the scope is not at the outset of the project. And and it's not enough to just say it once. We're gonna have to say it repeatedly. What is in plan, what is not in plan. And I appreciate you putting in this written document right up front, Ms. Wilson. And I will um I will do my best to play a role in continuing to refer back to this document as we go through this process. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Member Staunton. Well done. Well said. Um.
I have a.
Yes, Member Brindle.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking, you council members, because I'm back to the situation where I cannot see any of you. So.
Sure. Uh, on page two of the participation plan is a section called Participation Level. And as I read that, it um it reminded me of the challenge that I think occurred in the 58th Street project, where we would hear from residents and we would react and we would um look at the plan and have our own um ideas. Uh, and we were hearing from residents and not realizing that that communication was not getting to staff. So how Chad was able, and in some cases, really challenged, to be able to respond to some of the information we were receiving um was a direct result of the fact that he wasn't getting that communication. So what do we need to do? Um, I mean, I don't I don't look at who else is getting a communication that I might receive unless my name is the only name on it. Um, I assume that if it goes to City Council, that staff is seeing that, but maybe I'm assuming incorrectly. So how uh in communication that we receive, um, how can we keep staff informed of what we're hearing? And understandably, some of it we're hearing face to face. Um, so that's that's another step in um looking at our code of conduct. How should we be bringing that information forward and to whom?
Sure, thanks, Mary.
Oh, go ahead, Chad.
Maybe I'll jump in on that one. Um, one of the things, I think, if if there's a communication that goes to the City Council email, then other staff receive that and can forward it to staff members. When it gets difficult is when it goes to M. Brindle at Edina MN and not the rest of the council. When it goes to an individual council member, then it's, I guess, the responsibility of that individual member to forward that information to us. And, you know, Jessica or myself can be the placeholder of that information. And then if you have a meeting out on site and you can just provide a quick summary, is that an email? Is it a phone call? Just give us some um summary of what was discussed out there and what you heard and what concerns that resident may have shared with you that they didn't share with us in other methods, or maybe they shared it again with you and we can compare to what they submitted earlier.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I think also just encouraging people to participate through the process through Better Together Edina is a great way to do that, too. So in addition to hearing them out in whatever form they approach you, reminding them that there's a a space to provide that same feedback through the process also.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I um can I?
Yes, Member Staunton. Thank you.
Um, the other thing that Member Brindle's um comment makes me um want to note as well is, I really like the uniformity and and consistency of the way we're putting together this um plan, these planning efforts. Um, you know, when Member Brindle talked about this participation level is involved, it reminded me that, you know, this is what we started with when we started talking about how to do community engagement in a more thoughtful way. And involved is somewhere between delegate and notify, and it's a specific level of involvement or of engagement that we're gonna pursue. And I like the way there's a uniformity and a consistency to the way we're laying these things out in our in our planning documents, in our upfront documents. And so I wanna, and I know this is a lot of MJ's work and other work um that's going into this, and I really want to recognize that. I think it's um it's it's hard to stick with it when you're getting buffeted by crosswinds, but um but I like how this is um showing some consistency in the manner that we're approaching this.
Thank you, Member Staunton. Anyone else? Any other members of the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, for just just to um reinforce Ms. Wilson's um perspective uh on the engineering study as opposed to the special assessment consideration, I agree with that completely. Um, in a year, we're gonna look back on this time as an unfortunate time. The pandemic has affected us all. We're staying home. We're a little stressed. But stormwater is gonna be very real and probably more real in a year and two and three. And so walking down the path of exploring the engineering study over there, which is gonna be a it'll be an important part of our town and how we manage stormwater, it it's just really, it's really key. And we'll get to the special assessment piece. So thanks for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Fisher, anything?
I would just say I concur with all those comments. Now is the time to plan, and it's only gonna rain more. We gotta have, we gotta move things forward.
And I join my colleagues, too. Uh, one uh thought that came to mind based on Member Brindle's comments, uh with respect to this part, Public Participation Plan, uh does it reflect uh any lessons learned from the Public Participation Plan that we uh with which we had an inaugural voyage over on West 58th Street? That makes sense. Our lessons learned are rated in this particular document from West 58th Street experience.
So some of the things that we made sure to include in this plan was what is in scope and what is out of scope, that decision already made. So that bike facility that uh Member Staunton mentioned, that we made sure was was in there to be transparent about that. Um, and then also just that, you know, who's the expert and uh or which stakeholders are bringing expertise, right? So we know that the staff has expertise in things like flood risk management and engineering and transportation. Uh, but we know that residents provide a lot of expertise in sense of place and what it feels like to be in that neighborhood and how they use Weber Park. And so using the expertise amongst staff and the residents as stakeholders in the uh the stakeholders in the process, we can come to a good process and bring that to council. And we also know that it's our role to connect council with uh the stakeholders, and that goes both ways. So we want residents to understand the decisions that council is making and connect them to those decisions that you're making. Then we also want you to have a good understanding of what your residents are seeking and what they value and how that influenced the design. So we see the staff is kind of a part of the process, but we're really just trying to converge the the desires of the residents with the decisions of the council.
Good. Thank you for that. Um, are there any other questions by council members or comments regarding uh this particular matter? Uh, as you uh recall, Ms. Wilson said at the beginning of her presentation, uh, the motion here would involve two parts. I think we can handle it in a single motion. Uh, and that would be number one, approving the Public Participation Plan for the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project. And then as part of that, uh, part two would be uh authorizing the request for purchase for engineering and engagement services with bar engineering uh in the amount of $110,000. Is there a motion to that effect to adopt those two actions?
Some move.
Some move. Second.
All right, move by Member Fisher, I think, or Member Anderson.
Anderson.
Member Anderson, and then seconded by Member Brindle. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Allison?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Great, the uh motion passes. Resolution 20, let's see, oh, there was no resolution. Two-part motion, adopted, both parts. All right, we uh we're now in a position to move on to the last portion of this uh agenda, one final item. Uh, it involves several different uh component parts. This is the uh so-called Hankerson uh Avenue Project, and we um we're gonna have a presentation by Director Teague. Uh, there are several different options that we have here this evening. I think Member Anderson wants to address the council first. He recused himself uh from the public hearing that was held on April 7. You recall, we left the public hearing open then until the 15th of uh April at noon. For further uh public comment, uh that's all been received and reviewed. Uh, and we are in the decision-making uh at the decision-making point with regard to this particular application. Uh, and um, Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be recusing myself from this vote and the rest of this discussion on that project. So uh I'll um engage that right now with your permission.
All right, and then we will uh you, permission granted, of course, and then uh we'll have uh Manager Neel send you a text message when we've completed our discussion on the matter.
Very good. Thank you.
Or or a call, one of the two, so that you know when to come back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, with Member Anderson having recused himself, uh Director Teague will present this matter. Uh, and I think at the outset, I I will have to make it clear that we need all four of us to approve any change in the comprehensive plan in the absence of uh Member Anderson. So Director Teague, you wanna walk us through the matter again?
Uh, yes, certainly, uh, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. Um, I don't have a formal presentation tonight, but I'll just remind the council of what the request is and um just a little of the detail of the project. So the site is about, it's just west of of the Grandview District, west of Vernon. The applicant is proposing to tear down a four-unit apartment complex in a single-family home, so five units, and replace it with ten townhomes. The request requires a comprehensive guide plan amendment, as mentioned, and a rezoning of the site with multiple variances. Included in the council's packet this evening is resolutions for both approval and denial of the request for both comprehensive plan and the uh the rezoning. So there's two resolutions and an ordinance. We would recommend that you consider the comprehensive plan amendment first. If that, should that be denied, there's no reason to approve the the rezoning and site plan. So we would ask that you uh review or consider the the comprehensive plan amendment resolution first. As mentioned, four votes is required uh with this project um because of the comprehensive plan amendment. Also want to touch on the 120-day rule. We are at the end of our review period. Uh, the actual date is May 27, but this is the last City Council meeting for your consideration. So we would ask that the council does need to take action this evening, either approval or denial, unless the applicant is willing to extend period for if there be some kind of a delay based on your discussions. Um, so with that, I can turn it back to the City Council for any questions that you may have, or you can begin your consideration.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna call on uh Member Fisher.
Uh, Karen, I just have a few questions. Um, the the PRD3 zoning is what you're recommending, correct?
That's correct.
Which allows a higher density of development. What what happens if uh we amend the comp plan, we change the zoning, and this particular project doesn't happen? We have now rezoned that property in theory for a variety of higher density, correct? I mean, how do you look at that and is there really any, or do we really control everything anyway? So it it uh?
It is. It it is correct. It would be rezoned um and reguided for a higher density. There are still certain parameters within that specific zoning district, like the setbacks, the floor area ratio, or the the building coverage. So if should someone, should this project not be built, but approved for the rezoning and the comprehensive plan? If someone were to redevelop the site, they would still need to come in and go through a site plan review process, likely with with variances, like what's requested. So the city would still have some say in in the future development of the site.
Okay. My my next question has to do with the uh Materials Board, and I, I mean, I reviewed the Planning Commission meeting um one time full through and another few times um sporadically. I did not see anything, uh unless I just missed the piece. Um, but I didn't see the materials or the colors on an actual board. Did I miss it, or did was it not on camera?
It might not have been on camera. Um, they did provide a board, though, for the the commission to see.
I know they provided a board because I saw the developer carrying it out of the room after the the deliberation was over, but I, it just didn't. Um, so that is one little bit of flaw that we have to think about in this virtual environment is to make sure that um we're, you know, would have been fine in that case had had the camera hit the board. And I'm sure it was right in front of the podium so the planning commissioners could see it, but.
It was.
Okay. I'll let others ask questions, and then um I'll wanna obviously talk a little bit later.
Okay, yeah, that's a that's a good uh way to approach this, I think, is to get some questions answered first. Are the other council members that have questions for Director Teague? I've got a few. Yeah, Member Brindle, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, you know, this looks like an area of primarily single-family homes until you look at the area using Google Earth. Um, there are, there are a number of large apartment buildings that are pretty close to this. Uh, doesn't make me any more comfortable with um the size of this, but um but there are, there are some apartments of significant size. They're kind of buffered by a lot of landscaping. There's some water back there to the west as well. Um, looking at this, however, um, was there given any thought, was there any thought given to um a development that instead of being one single building of what used to be 12 units and now 10? now 10, to breaking it up into smaller buildings to get some relief? And, you know, it's been mentioned, but it's, you know, the developer doesn't respond or take it seriously. So I'm wondering, it just, the fortress-like size of this building has me very concerned. And that, you know, that said, it's sitting right next to Vernon Terrace, which is probably larger than this building would be. But, but looking at what it's replacing, it just, it just gives me pause because it's going to be so visible. So that's one thing that I'm having trouble with. The other thing that I'm having trouble with is actually the fences across the front. It makes it look unwelcoming.
Would you, then again, Member Brindle, you cut out a little bit.
The, the other thing that has me concerned, I don't like the fences across the front. So there's, there's, there's actually an FBI building, and it's in Brooklyn Center, and it's surrounded by black iron fence. So when I look at this, that's what it looks like to me. And I'm, I'm not sure that that's, I'm sure it's not the intent for this to look like that, but that's, that's the idea I get. It doesn't look residential to me. It doesn't look welcoming to me to see the, to see the fence across the front. So I'm not, I'm not feeling good about this. One of the points that Member Fisher brought up is something that I've been concerned about, and that is that if the comp plan amendment were to pass, and this development doesn't get built, then then there we are. We have a high-density zoned piece of property, couple pieces of property that somebody else could come in and, and do something high-density with. So, so I am, I'm coming into this, I don't know what my outcome is going to be on it. I've been hearing from a lot of people. I know people in that neighborhood. I, matter of fact, have, have horn-playing friend in that neighborhood and also a student in that neighborhood, and, and am hearing from them. So, so the, so number one is that overall, I'm concerned about size. Two, the fence, I just don't like it. Three, the comp plan amendment. And then fourth, there is one, 52nd Street. So I do not want 52nd Street and make it, and opening up 52nd Street to be part of this. It is a completely different issue, does not have really anything to do with putting this development there. If it were to happen in the future, then it can be considered at that time, but I think it just makes this decision more confusing to have 52nd Street be part of it.
All right. Well, maybe, Member Brindle, as we go along, and some of the rest of us ask questions and try to gather more data, we'll, we'll be able to better direct ourselves and each other in a fruitful conversation here. So.
Right. That's what I hope.
Yeah. Do we have any questions right now, Member Staunton? Otherwise, I've got some. You go ahead.
So I know that Carrie asked us to address the comp plan first. I've got a couple of questions on the zoning, but I can hold those if you want to wait, or I could ask those now.
I was really referring to when you're ready to make a motion, that you take action on the comprehensive plan first for the discussion purposes.
On the zoning.
Carrie, for that clarification. I was just going to say, I think Mike hit on a good pathway here. I think we should just kind of generally talk about our concerns here before we get to any particular potential action here. So, Member Staunton, go ahead.
So the questions I have on the zoning is, is you're saying it's PRD3 because that is most like what is the apartment buildings to the south? Is it right, Carrie?
That is, that is true. Correct.
So, but I don't see this project as really being like the apartment buildings to the south. Are there, and one of the things I noticed in the zoning code, and it may be a typo, when it talks about lot area per dwelling unit and maximum allowance per dwelling unit in square feet, there's a PRD1 and then two different PRD3 designations. I assume one of them's a PRD2.
Correct.
So I'm, you know, and this talks about a maximum allowance per dwelling unit in square feet of 1,500 feet for a PRD3. Would these satisfy that?
The, the footprint, I believe, satisfies that. Unless that's a provision that I missed.
So, so I guess, big picture, I'm wondering if PRD3 is the right zoning. Is there something between PRD3 and a single family that is a better fit?
I think staff was thinking with the PRD1 and PRD2, those are typically lower-density areas.
I know they talk about a minimum of lot area per dwelling unit of 10,500 feet or 7,300 feet.
Right.
Well, perhaps there's something more that needs to be fashioned. But anyway, my question was just about the PRD3 and why that was the suggestion. Was there a consideration of PUD at any point?
I believe we had the discussion. It was quite some time ago. I believe the applicant made the decision to not request the PUD.
Okay.
Oftentimes that, you know, that, that may work better because we're writing a zoning ordinance specific for that site.
Right. So then the other questions I had were, are kind of comp plan related. So I just want to clarify a few things about this to make sure I'm getting them right. So, so both of the properties here are guided in our current comp plan as low-density attached residential, correct?
Correct.
And that is different than low-density detached residential, right?
Correct.
So low dac, low, low-density detached would be single-family homes.
Correct.
And these are, so the building that is on this southern parcel now is not compliant with the guidance in that it's both too dense because it's medium density, and it is not a low-density, it is not attached residential either, because it has one entrance for four units, correct?
Correct. As that site sits by itself today, yes.
So it is, it is not compliant with the guidance in either respect right now.
With that, with that site on its own, that's correct.
Okay. And then if we were to, to attached residential, townhomes are part of attached residential, correct?
Correct.
And then they talk about duplexes, townhomes. Basically, the notion is you've got a separate entrance for every unit.
Yes.
Okay. So if, and if we were to do low-density residential, we would only be able to do five units across these two parcels and be compliant with the density, right?
That's, that's correct.
But if we did medium, the most we could do would be eight units?
Well, eight units is, if they did eight units across the two sites, the density is 12 units an acre, so it's right on the high-density and medium-density.
Right. That's the, the medium density is eight to 12 units, right?
Correct. High-density is then 12 to 60.
So, so anything higher than eight would be high-density, but we'd still be in a medium-density. And right now, that southern spot is done on medium-density as well, correct? As it sits, it's medium-density, even though it's guided for low-density.
Correct. Yeah, the two sites that are guided for the low-density attached are the four-unit complex and the single-family home.
Right. And those two are guided low-density attached. And then the properties to the north of it are low-density residential, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify those points. Appreciate it.
I think based on the calculations you did for me, Carrie, the, remember Staunton's point, if it's eight units, the density, units per acre number is 11.9, which is at the very tip or the very end, the high end of medium-density, but not yet high-density. All right?
Well, unfortunately, the number is this.
High-density is 12 to 60 units per acre. And if there are eight units there, that's 11.9. The density is 11.9. Remember Staunton's point?
Yeah, it's medium-density.
That's medium-density. Yeah. So here's a, here's a couple of things I was wondering about. You know, when you go over there, and I think I believe the same thing Member Brindle believes, and that is, and I think Member Staunton was kind of implicit in what he was talking here about the existing zoning. If it's to be PRD3, that's, that's most like the apartment building, Vernon Terrace to the south. But to me, this neighborhood has nothing to do with Vernon Terrace to the south. For some reason, in my mind, when I'm over there and aesthetically, 52nd is some sort of magical boundary. And maybe it's because of that open piece of property towards Vernon Avenue. But that neighborhood seems isolated to me from Vernon Terrace. And so the issue of whether or not to connect 52nd to Vernon, which I don't favor, it, it doesn't seem to me like that's the right kind of zoning for what we're talking about here. Member Staunton touched on all of that. The comp plan, as you mentioned presently, has that guided for low-density attached residential. The move would put us in high-density residential. One of the things that intrigues me about the area over there, and some of this gets to be a little bit subjective, but that apartment building's been there since, I think, the mid to late 50s, and defies the code, really, in the two ways that Member Staunton mentioned. When you look at the building from a distance, you look at it from across the road at Jerry's, it's been there so long that it actually kind of fits that single-family neighborhood in a way. It is an outlier, but maybe it's just time has calmed it down. And when I look at the, one of the reasons I think it's calming for me at least, is the fact that the lot coverage that you said in your memo is presently at 30%. And if we went to 10 units of townhouses, taking down 5132 to the north, we'd have lot coverage at 47%. And we would lose, we would lose, because of the recommendations you've made to create more separation to the north, we would lose those beautiful white pines to the south. I mean, there's probably 100, 150-year-old trees sitting there by that garage unit, that if we figure out how to do this the right way, those trees could potentially be saved. And that was an important consideration for me. The, and then I had you do some computations for me to look at how many units we would have here in terms of what percent of lot coverage we'd have. And of course, with the 10 units, you're at 47% lot coverage, where the base coverage now is 30%. If we were at nine units, we'd be at 44% lot coverage. Eight units is 39% lot coverage. Seven units, 35. Six units, 30. But we know that there's some point at which it's economically unfeasible for the developer to do this. But I think what we're all trying to get by here is, and find a logical way to do it, is the fact that, for me, when I look at the site plan, when I look at the elevations of the building, even though you've taken 5132 to the north, it feels like 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag. And so some of the things about it are good, like the setback being the same as the single-family homes on Hankerson. I think that's an important consideration. Finding the middle, for me, is, the missing middle, is an important consideration. Because I think that's a good thing. If you, if you stood over by Jerry's and looked over there behind Wells Fargo, and you, and you saw some array of townhouses, I think, done right, it could fit the neighborhood. The the need for me, though, would be to think carefully about increasing the setback on 52nd to be able to preserve those white pines. And to your idea on the north end, it seems like we could adopt that idea and create enough spacing between that house to the north of 5132 and the building. Based on the measurements that I've seen, it would be beyond the existing driveway, probably lose that ash tree that's in the front yard of that person's house, but they're at risk anyway. So the question I got really wrong in my head is how many units could we build if the existing setback requirements were generally maintained? In other words, what I'm looking for greens, is for green space around this building, something that the neighbors have come to appreciate. The setbacks from the street on Hankerson being approximately the same as the single-family homes, the rear setback, moving that from 35 feet to 21 feet, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that. And I'm comfortable with that 35-foot setback, I think, on the north property line. But again, I would say that the existing building at Vernon Terrace is, to me, more like a building that's in a totally different neighborhood and has no influence for me on the block north of 52nd in terms of arguing that it's more of a mixed-use and creates, helps create a mixed-use situation. I'm also comfortable with the height, because if this were a two-story, single-family home in an R1 district, you'd be allowed 35 feet, and they're seeking 36 feet. So what it comes down to me is the number of units being the question. And I think there were a couple letters from some of the neighbors that said they didn't want to look at 200 feet of townhouses on that particular piece of property, that 0.69 acres. I actually think it's more than 200 feet, because when I look at the colored site plan, what I did, I measured, it was 232 feet in length, because there's eight units that are 20 feet wide, and there's two that are 35 foot wide, one on each end. So I think we're actually talking about even more coverage there than, than we thought. I mean, I know the percentage is the same at 47. But what I'm trying to do is work my way some way, somehow, with the help of my colleagues, to a point where we can talk about what makes sense over there. I think the builder's right that single-family homes won't work. That's probably not affordable. But I'm certainly not in favor of 10 townhouse units. I think townhouse living over there would be magnificent if, and Member Fisher, I think, maybe, he worked on the transportation plan. He'll have some observations on that. And so I'm eager to kind of listen to people's comments about this, because I'm at the point where I'm comfortable with a lot of it, but I'm not comfortable with it in terms of the total number of units. And I want to try to preserve as much green space as possible, and I want to try to keep a decent side yard setback on 52nd, create that same sort of ambiance that exists there now. What that means in terms of number of units, it's something for me, less than 10, probably more than, more than, you know, seven to, seven to nine, somewhere in there could potentially work, depending on what those measurements would reveal in terms of how much side yard setback we need off 52nd to save those 100-plus-year-old white pines. Those are kind of my general comments that, as Member Brindle made general comments, I'd say those are mine for the time being. I don't know if we want to go back to Member Fisher now, who wants to speak a little bit more to some of the thoughts he's having, or if someone else wants to ask more questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Fisher.
Would you mind if I show my screen? I put together some graphics to help show a little bit about what I've been doing to analyze this. You okay? You okay? Can I do that?
Yeah, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Everyone see that?
Yes.
All right, so you see two, you see an aerial photo on the left and a map on the right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm a graphics person, so you'll have to indulge me a little bit here.
I'm sorry, Mike. I only have black screen right now.
How's everyone?
What are other, what are other people seeing?
I can see it.
Oh, there it is. I got it now.
All right. So some comments have been made about this neighborhood, and I think they're very astute comments. I've, I've been very intrigued as this process has gone along, and first of all, I just want to thank the many, many residents of the neighborhood that have reached out and were part of the public hearing, but also the planning commission, in particular, the planning commission. I thought their deliberation was really, really good and, and really caused me to think about some things here. And I've spent quite a bit of time driving around this neighborhood. And it's not what you think when you drive past the neighborhood. And we heard from many of the residents, but I also experienced it driving through. Just want to make sure this is changing. You see a change on the screen? Just highlighting the, can you sit? So I switched slides. Someone just confirm that it is switching?
No, it's not. It's the same array that you had up there before. The
But do you see the site in red?
Yeah. Yes, we do.
Okay, okay, so it did change. So just identifying that's where the site is, you know, Vernon here, the Jerry's over here, but the, the neighborhood, if you look on the aerial photo, even on an aerial, you can see very definite boundaries of this neighborhood up here on Interlocken. And you can see the very definitive change of development pattern on the west edge down here on Fifty Second. I would argue that the neighborhood does come all the way down to Fifty Third and up and around. In fact, I'm going to change the slide one more time, and I actually drew a boundary of what I actually think the neighborhood boundary is. And the reason I drew it there is because everything outside that black line is outward-facing. Okay, so you have the business-type things, you have some multifamily up here, the bank, all of this multifamily, none of it is accessed from inside this boundary. And that's a really important thing to look at in terms of how traffic flows in and out of this neighborhood. And some people read maps a little better than aerials, so that's why I've been doing this dual thing here. But you can see the parcel patterns, how unique they are to everything around it. So it's pretty clear what the single-family neighborhood looks like. And I shouldn't say single-family. You have duplexes down here and up here, which I'll be talking about in just a minute. I just wanted to show here, this is the other thing that really defines this neighborhood, unlike most neighborhoods in the city, is there are only five ways in and out. Really, just going up or going down. That's how you get in or out. Very discreet entrance and exit points. And then from a, the thing that interests me, as I've been getting more interested or into this development proposal is like, how are people walking over to Jerry's or all the commercial establishments? There are really only two crossing points up at the intersection at Interlocken and the intersection at Eden across into this apartment or this multifamily complex. And here's Fifty Second. So I want to just mention that in a minute. I just want to take, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, I want to take a few minutes and address the transportation plan because it's one thing, clearly, there's a lot of angst in the neighborhood about this, and that I, I would hopefully, when we come out of this meeting, no matter what we decide, we can help people relax a little bit about that. Because people are very concerned right now that that this plan, which is done in two thousand sixteen roughly, and just for full disclosure, prior to me being on the city council, I'm, in my daytime job, I'm an urban designer, and I was involved and led the team that did this transportation plan. And you can see some new intersections, some new streets in the Grandview area. This is, this is, you're looking at the long-term plan. This is a thirty-year outlook into the future. But some things happen, you know, to get to thirty years, things have to happen before that incrementally. But I want to address, in particular, this Fifty Second Street intersection. Now, while it shows connected for automobiles, it doesn't specify that that's a must. It's one, one solution. And just to take us back a step, real problem in the Grandview Street Network, and as we proposed adding new streets, the, the worst intersection in all of Grandview is the Interlocken Vernon Intersection. And at the time, and this was just, you know, five years ago, we didn't know of any way we could improve the intersection without taking one of these two properties, and, and that didn't seem like something the city would be willing to do. So the plan talked about making incremental improvements all along Vernon to allow, for instance, all of the folks in this neighborhood to not have to go up to Interlocken to get back. So to give them more exit points and entrance points. And what we've heard over and over from folks is, well, that will mean more cut-through traffic in their neighborhood. Now, just as a point of information, we never expected, but it happened pretty quickly, and this is the why you do plans, right? Because when you have a plan, certain, in this case, this development on this corner of the, of the Caribou Coffee, when they approached us, they offered land to allow us to get that extra turn lane that we needed to get, that was in the transportation plan. And so as counterintuitive as it seemed that we were adding a high-traffic business to a high-traffic intersection to make the traffic work better in that and that's exactly what we did. And we did it because they were able to offer that land as part of that development project. But what that also did is it, it made it a little less essential to make this move down here. And so the reason I say that, now I just want to focus in for a minute, that this intersection will be important someday, but it doesn't have to be a throughput for cars. What it will be, and if you notice in the long-range plan, is creating more of a street-like element over here by Jerry's and also one going north-south. And at the time, there was no Avidor, but we just had a, you know, kind of a, a building shape here, but we also said that maybe there's a corridor coming all the way through here to parking in the back. Whether or not that ever happens, we don't know. That'll be some future council dealing with, probably. But this development also moved a little bit to allow that to happen if it ever is necessary in the future. So my point is, I heard it loud and clear from the residents. I've heard it loud and clear from planning, and I've heard it from, I think, almost all of you already, that there's not going to be a lot of appetite and really no reason to have vehicular traffic crossing. But at least today, as we sit here, that doesn't mean it isn't going to be something in the future, but the important thing is to connect pedestrians from this neighborhood safely across to Jerry's along this whole sidewalk area. So I put that out there just hopefully to help people because, and here's the other thing you learn, when we did this transportation plan, it's hard, and Chad knows this, it's hard to get people to come out and talk about a transportation plan for thirty years from now. That is not what people put at the top of their entertainment list. But when a development is proposed, it really does get people's attention, and then they find out about this plan and, and got very concerned. So I just wanted to make sure that hopefully, that concern isn't that great and that we can, you know, that it's, that's completely disconnected from this project and likely, probably not a likelihood that it'll even happen for a connection for cars. So now I just want to jump back to the, to the project at hand. Again, here are the two parcels. And this is what we've been talking about tonight, and I just had to graphically show it for myself that the current, this is the current land use. So all of this dark color is the mixed-use center. All of this darker orange is the high-density residential. And then that low-density attached residential is this lighter yellow. And what's interesting is, and this is, this is what it is today. This is not a proposal for the future. So interesting that these three parcels were highlighted to be attached residential, and you see how they're sort of filling that gap. And we always talk about transition zones. So even whenever this was done, it was sort of seen as a transition from the busy street to this very fine, you know, finely grained neighborhood. And when you read, I think Councilmember Staunton was referring to this, the description is that this land use, the attached residential, it's really single-family homes, but with a, with shared walls. And so it's either townhomes or duplexes. And townhomes tend to be clustered close to highway or major road corridors. And the point is that it is that transitional piece, and, and it's a great, great use for a transition like that. So there's no, to me, it makes perfect sense that it would be proposed here in terms of a, a use type. And I agree with this. I, I just, I don't buy this becoming high-density PRD three. I don't, it's, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's actually a good idea. One thing I want to show here is in terms of density, though, that, that whole discussion, I think too often we focus the density conversation on, in this case, two parcels. So you add up the units, divide it by the, the point six-seven, and, and you, and you get a number, and if it's on, you know, if it's eleven point nine four, you're in medium, and if it's one unit more, you're in high density. But really, did it change that much with adding that one unit or subtracting that one unit? So what I did over here on the right, and I hope you can see it, the way I look at density is, look at the neighborhood, for one thing. So each one of these streets is a segment. And we've got one, two, three, four, five, what, nine segments here in this neighborhood. And all of them are the same length with the same amount of infrastructure. So each one of these streets. And now I want to tie this back to all of this street reconstruction conversation we have. There's a cost to each one of these streets. And there's an infrastructure there. And and there's a number of families that live on each street. And what's interesting about this is when you count the number of families that live on each street in this neighborhood, with the exception of the one over here on Oxford with the, if you can see over in the aerial, there's a, it's a very dr, a steep drop-off, and it's probably not developable over there, and it's this is the one segment that's not the same length. But if you look at all of the segments that are the same amount of infrastructure as Hankerson here, Hankerson is almost half the density of every other street in the neighborhood. And, and that's because everything on the east side of the street is, is really outward-facing to Vernon, except this one property right here. So if you added five more families to this street, you're still the lowest-density street in the neighborhood. And the reason I say that is we get so caught up in the terminology that we lose sight of what's really happening here. And, and a number of the neighbors were saying it's going to be crazy, the amount of traffic, and, and I know if they were, and that's why I wanted to dispel the Fifty Second Street thing. Let's just take that off the table. Adding five families to this street will not make it a crazy traffic nightmare any more than any other street in this neighborhood. So just trying to make that point. I think what's more important, so, so from my perspective, density is not the issue. I'm not, I'm not in favor of going to PRD three, high-density or any of that, but just in pure terms of how many units can be put on this lot. So then I come back to what is the character of the neighborhood? That, to me, is the next big thing to look at. And I drove up all of the, up and down those streets, and, and there's a real character there, and it's a great neighborhood. So my issue is the variances and the lot coverage. Those are going to have more impact on the character of the neighborhood than the number of family units that were, we would, that, that would be put here. But I'm concerned about those, and I think I am uncomfortable with ten units, again, not because of the density, but because of the the way it fits in here or doesn't fit in here. The mayor's point to all of your points. I think the length of the building is is a, is a bit much, and it causes the rhythm to kind of be not sort of a comfortable rhythm. Commissioner Bennett brought this up a little bit, and I thought he was spot-on. I think the height is fine. There's nothing wrong with the height here that's being proposed. I think the rear setback is fine to the alley. I'm a little uncomfortable. I don't know if you can save the trees. It would be great if you can. But I know that creating a variance for coverage and for the sideyard setbacks doesn't feel right to me, and, and at the same time, saying that we're not affecting neighborhood character. I believe it's important. I, I think this product, this townhome product in this location is really good and a nice transition. And I really believe that we can't solve this by economically with, you know, three single-family homes or whatever. I, I think the minimum, and this is just gut level, you know, I it's, I don't know, but I think eight units is going to be the minimum that would work. But it's also probably the maximum that I'd be comfortable with because of the the, the coverage and the variances. And and, and the other bonus to it, I think, is that I know we're going to have to amend the comp plan. But right now, today, with the five units on these two properties, it's already in the medium-density category. So by allowing eight units, it feels like it kind of addresses many of the concerns that the neighbors had. It still gives the developer more saleable units by three than they have today. And, and so hopefully, that can work economically. Still get our missing middle. That's the part that scares me a little bit, is that if we're dropping two units off, can we have a a price point that, that still kind of hits where it's helpful? But to me, it just, that's where I feel like it wants to land, is at eight. So with that, I'll take, I'll stop sharing here and get back to everyone's lovely faces.
Yeah, very, very well done, Member Fisher. Thank you for your analysis. Member Staunton, do you want to comment further?
Yeah.
What you're generally thinking about, I think that would be instructive and helpful to all of us, as well as we try to figure out what to do here.
So I agree with a lot of the things that Councilmember Fisher had to say. I too was quite impressed with the planning commission's deliberations on this. I thought they did a terrific job. And one of the things that I thought was really interesting that captured my attention because it it was it was my intuition as well, was there was kind of a divide between what do we think is the right use as this property or a couple of properties evolve? And what is our kind of commitment to the community on the comprehensive plan? And I know Commissioner Nemirov said basically that he really liked the project, but he wasn't willing to change the comprehensive plan. And I, I appreciate that because we have basically said to the community, and Mr. Mayor, there's a a recent Strong Towns article commenting on your summary of this, that we are looking to take advantage of certain pockets of our community that are tired commercial zones that are changed, that want to change, and to add some density there as a way to manage our way forward, but to preserve the low-density, single-family neighborhoods throughout the city. And so the question becomes, how do you do that in this setting? And as I look at this, that becomes a question of what change would there be here? And if you look at it as it exists now on the parcel with the fourplex, it is non, it it fails to conform with the guidance in the comprehensive plan in two different ways. It is neither a single-family attached, because it's got one entrance for four units, nor is it low-density. This project gives us a chance to fix that, to make it residential attached, which is a single entrance for each unit, and to keep it at medium-density. And so my intuition on the comp plan is, if you if you permit eight units, you've got it medium-density and residential attached. And, you know, one of the neighbors to the north, Mr. Mahler, raised an interesting point when he commented. He talked about the kind of domino theory that, well, what if this starts kind of a whole chain reaction up and down the street? Well, one of the things that's really interesting about this is that these are the only two parcels on Hankerson that are guided for single-family attached housing. The rest are low-density residential detached housing. And I think there's a logical reason for that when you look at the map that you had up, Mike. And that is northern boundary of this second property is lined up almost exactly with the southern boundary of the bank property. And the reason is that they're both basically fronting on Vernon Avenue. And so it was logical to have those be that kind of property. And so I'm not worried about a domino effect here if we if we go ahead and make this, you know, what it already is, which is medium-density, because if we don't approve something here, then that fourplex is going to stay there, and that continues to be inconsistent with the guide that we, the direction that we've aimed for on this. So my intuition on this is that I'd be, I'd be happy to approve an eight-unit townhome here. I think there's a ton of reasons that a townhome is a terrific, townhomes are a terrific use in this property. I could actually see potentially in the future, that bank turning over with townhomes that face on Vernon. And as we change the character of Vernon, there's going to be a different kind of feel along there. And I don't think it makes any sense for these to be single-family dwellings, either economically or from a planning perspective. So I think that townhomes are the right use. And I think if you get to eight units, you're still medium-density, which is basically what it is today, so you're not changing it at all. And you, you know, you can manage the the lot coverage that a couple of my colleagues have expressed some concern about. I I would even let them spread out a little bit if it's going to be eight units instead of ten units, but but you can still make it a little more green space. So the big picture for me is the comp plan, and and I think permitting an eight-unit townhome development on this site is the right thing to do. And it manages to keep what we really, the the guts of what we really tried to do here in terms of the comprehensive plan.
Well, thank you for those comments. We talked a little bit about the trees, at least I did, having been over there several times and seen those magnificent white pines. I had Kerry do some calculating, and this is just further food for thought. The pine trees on the south side of the lot are with respect to the proposed site plan with ten units, those trees would be in the middle of unit number one. And to save those trees, that unit would have to be eliminated. And but then the trees would only be ten feet from unit number two. So to assure that those trees survive, then unit number two would have to be considered for elimination, which would then take you to the eight-unit count. There are ash trees up along the north property line. We know from our own experience with Ashbor, Emerald Ashbor, that we're, we took trees down quite a few trees down in Arden Park in anticipation we would lose them anyway. And then I think Director Teague has already created a bit of a buffer up north. Remember Staunton's point? You know, maybe the thing could be moved around on the property a little bit. I'd be willing to think about that. I I think the the key thing now, just from a discussion standpoint, is that we're at the end of the sixty-day clock. We have to do something tonight. We've got a few options that I asked Director Teague to sketch out for us. Would be to approve the project tonight by requiring the elimination of to remember Staunton's point, let's say, two units, one or two units. So you have an eight- or nine-unit development. If the applicant's agreeable, and the plans are the same, except for the elimination of the the two units. And maybe adjusting so that we create a a better side yard setback on the south side, because right now that side yard setback was proposed for a variance from thirty-five feet to twelve feet, which would definitely put those trees in harm's way. The second thing we can do, Director Teague said, is that if the recommendation is to go to medium-density development, as Member Staunton just talked about, that would require a whole new application for a comprehensive plan amendment for a medium-density designation. And under this scenario, we would, I think he would suggest that we deny the request tonight, or the applicant could withdraw by sending an email yet tonight and revise his submittal. Or a third, what we've done before, we've asked the applicant to extend the sixty-day review tonight by, and he'd have to do that by sending an email and then come back with revised plans consistent of what the council, the direction the council's heading, if they so desire. So those are, those were the three options that were set forth by Director Teague. And Director Teague, you might want to articulate those in a little bit more detail.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was mistaken when I said we had to take action tonight. It indicated May twenty-seventh was the deadline. And that is, that is the deadline. So you're not forced to take action this evening. The applicant has indicated he's willing to look at a PUD, and they'd like to take a look at the economics a little, in a little more detail in terms of eight units. And they would be open to tabling this evening, because we we do have an extra month.
All right. Well, I, you know, we talked about that today, and we had that confirming note from Roger that said, yes, we had to act tonight. So I did see that date of May twenty-seventh, too, and I was kind of scratching my head, but nonetheless, I didn't think about it in in detail. So.
There, I stand corrected.
Self-correcting. So Rod, we have, you're comfortable, we have, we have time?
Yes.
We could, it was, so we could lay this over, Director Teague?
We could.
We needed, we needed a request for extension tonight from the applicant. I take it we still need that?
We would not need that this evening.
No, we would not need that. Okay. All right. Because of the May twenty.
I'm still struggling a little bit with the density, because we have a medium-density range of five to twelve and a high-density range of twelve to sixty. I guess this project would, at eight units, it comes at an eleven point nine. My point is, if the comprehensive plan amendment is for a medium-density development, we need to, we didn't advertise for a medium-density comprehensive guide plan change. We advertised for a high-density guide plan change. So if we're going to medium-density, we would need to renotice that and go back to the planning commission.
So does that give us any clock issues? A hundred and twenty days is, what I understand you're saying is that the hundred and twenty days is up on May twenty-seventh. Does that give us enough time to go back to the planning commission if we're talking medium-density in the in the comp plan?
Not give us that that amount of time, but at least in, within the next month, we could sort that issue out. We can talk to the applicant. And if we need an extension, if eleven point nine is actually considered high-density, maybe we could still proceed within the next month. But I'd like to, I'd like to sort through that issue a little more.
Okay.
I'm no mathematician, but eleven point nine is less than twelve.
If we're saying, yeah, if we're not going to round or any.
I think it's important that it be medium-density, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
And not be high-density, because I think it's different than the property to the south that is high-density.
Yet then it does become a new application. And we would have a couple of options if the applicant's not willing to change. You could deny the the current proposal within the next two meetings.
Well, there's a lot of smart people on our staff and on the applicant's team that can figure out the process issues.
Yes, I think we can get that.
What do you prefer we do from an action standpoint tonight, Director Teague, or Mr. Knudsen?
Continue it.
Yeah, we, I'd recommend.
My first instinct was to just continue it indefinitely.
Oh, to next.
Or continue it to a date.
Continue it till your next meeting. Or May, until May twenty-seventh.
Well, May fifteenth would be our last meeting in May.
Okay, May fifteenth.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too, Member Brendel. What's our last meeting in May? It's May fifteenth, so we would continue it to May fifteenth, Director Teague?
Uh, May nineteenth is your second meeting in May.
Is it?
So, so why wouldn't we just continue it to the next meeting in case there was something that came up in between? And then, and then if there wasn't, we could continue it for another meeting.
Agreed.
I would know, like, that you're, Kerry, your your planning commission memorandum at the bottom of it had a deadline for city decision of May fifteenth.
Right.
So I don't know if that I just wouldn't want to continue it to a date after and continue it. It sounds like for sure we have, at least until the next first meeting in May.
You do. Your second meeting in May is May nineteenth. So that would be your ultimate deadline.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we continue this item to the first meeting in May.
Is there a second? We got a motion by Member Staunton and a second by Member Fisher to continue this matter until the first meeting in May, twenty twenty. Any further discussion?
I, I just.
Yes.
I want to add one more thing, Mr. Mayor. Because I'm sure the developer is going to have to take all this in and figure out, you know, what they want to do. And the only other thing, first of all, if I didn't say it before, I I'm really happy they brought this development forward. I think it's really close to what the community what what was a good community project in terms of the transition and all those reasons. And I think it's the right solution. We just got to get the right size that also fits the needs of the neighborhood, and it's right. The other thing I I wanted to comment on is the, and I made a comment earlier about the materials. I just want them to know that I I do want to see what those materials are eventually, and and where I'm coming at is I don't rather not just see a thin little strip of brick. I'd like to see it be a little bit more you know, the aesthetics are going to matter here. And I know some of the planning commissioners brought that up as well, so just factoring all of that in. So they they heard it now, not later.
Point. I'd like to see the material board myself. I'm sure everybody else would as well.
I have a couple of.
Member Brendel?
A couple of things before we close this matter for tonight. So thinking about the process that we went through to approve a development on Forty-Ninth Street. So this is off of Brookside. You're you're coming down behind Holiday, and you take your first right onto Forty-Ninth. And we saw no fewer than three or maybe four different development ideas for that property. And I'm not saying that we want to see four development ideas on this property. But but there are options. There are options for what can go here. And and looking at the work that was done to come to the point where we have a combination development over there. We've got a multi-unit building, and we've got five single-family villa homes in that piece of property. And I don't remember how big that property is. I'm sure it's bigger than this by some. But but I think you know, I to to put everything in one building on this piece of property has me has me really, really concerned about it. If I look at the brownstones on France, if you straighten those out into one long building, you'd have the same concerns that I have about this. But what they did with that is that they arced it. They put it into two arcs that face each other with a courtyard in the middle. And this property isn't as deep as that one. But I think they could be creative and put the garage underneath and have, and then gain more property. So I I'm I'm hoping that we can see some more creativity, rather than a straight line, when when they come back to us. But I do appreciate the discussion tonight. I'm much more comfortable at eight units than ten. I agree that there are five units currently there, and that the net is not ten new units. It's it's at most five new new units. But but I I appreciate the discussion tonight and hope that that as as the developer takes a look at what we've been able to discuss tonight and what our concerns are, that when they come back, we'll have something that that we can, we can discuss further and hopefully take home with a decision on the on the first meeting in May.
All right. Thank you, Member Brendel. I think the peril of the underground parking is that we lose that missing middle concept. Because then we'd be going to probably now in this market, I don't know, thirty-five to fifty thousand a stall underground.
Okay.
Anyway, just a thought. But I do think that what you're, where you're heading is probably the same place Member Staunton was heading and everybody else, that getting it to a point where the comp plan designation is medium-density, that's consistent with history since the mid-fifties is really critical, because if there are other things that come along, you know, if we make those changes, and then this project doesn't go for some reason, we don't want to be in a position where we've authorized PCD three and, or PRD three, PRD three and high-density residential. Anyway, okay, any further discussion? Moved and set for continuation to first meeting in May. Roll call, please.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye.
Motion carries. The matter is continued to the first meeting in May. And that completes that portion of our agenda involving reports and recommendations. And now we are on to correspondence and petitions. And we had one petition for a sidewalk come in relative to High Whiskas, Guilford, and Kellogg Avenues. And there's a recommendation by staff, I think, that we received that petition. we received that petition uh and forwarded to the engineering department. Um, and uh, who has this matter from staff standpoint? Director Milner?
Yeah, Mayor, there's, there's enough, no matter, just please forward it to us and we'll respond to the petitions received here tonight. And recall, you received petitions at the last council meeting and we'll follow up with a report on all those petitions.
So move.
We got a motion by Member uh Stotan. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by uh, Member Brendel. Uh, any further discussion? This is a motion to receive the petition for a sidewalk on Hibiscus, Guilford and Kellogg Avenue. And directing that it be forwarded to the engineering, engineering department for consideration. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson? Member Anderson, your mic is.
You're on mute. You're on mute. There you go.
Aye.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Stotan?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye. Uh, motion carries. And uh, is there any correspondence that has come in that we need to be aware of other than what was um in our virtual packet, our electronic packet? Ms. Allison, anything?
No, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Manager Neil, you're muted.
Manager Neil, you want to get off mute? There you go.
Nothing on the dais for you tonight.
I'm in. All right. Thank you. Uh, council comments.
Aviation noise?
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Yeah, thank you. Aviation noise update, Member Brendel.
Thank you. I just have a quick one. Um, so with the reduction in air travel, uh, I suggested to the uh, to Brad Jufre of the MAC, who is the NOC liaison, that we should review the 2020 work plan, which includes um, sound monitoring and um, and also uh activity on 30 runways, 30L and 30R and nighttime operations. With the reduced air travel, we're not going to get the information that we would in a busy market that produces the noise that people are concerned about. So I think we'll, I'm hoping we'll see a modification in the 2020 work schedule. So that's all I have on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Member Brendel. That cause any comments from any of the council members or inquiries that you want to make of Member Brendel? All right, Member Brendel, you want to leave this off on um, council comments?
Sure. So um, so I started the day today at our Rotary meeting where we listened to the woman who is the voice of Siri. And it was pretty interesting. She's the voice of Siri and she's the voice of a number of GPS apps. But that was, that was very interesting to listen to this voice that you never see a face of. Um, and then I went over to Strachauer Park this morning. So Edina Morningside Rotary made a donation to the city of Edina. Uh, and they are using those funds to plant trees at Strachauer Park. And so today was our Arbor Day uh observance at Strachauer Park. And as it turns out, um, Herman Strachauer, who the park is named after, was, he served on the planning commission from about 1950 to about 1970. Uh, actually was about from 1950 to about 61. And um, and it was his goal to uh, to see the city at the time, the village, set aside land for parks. So um, so he is known, I suppose, with some of the other members of the park board at the time as the father of Edina's parks, which is pretty cool. And uh, John Pastor, who is a member of Edina Morningside Rotary, um, is his grandson. So there is a nice connection with Herman Strachauer on a couple of levels. So that was terrific. Uh, Luther Overhope was very helpful. And we planted a white pine today. And it's one of several trees that are going to be planted at Strachauer Park as well as other parks in the city. So that is, let's see. Um, that's what I have. The other stuff we already talked about, so.
Thank you, Member Brendel. Member Anderson?
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I, in the course of this evening, there's been, there's, to me, there's been some very um interesting conversations. Um, one of them, uh, you know, we talked about uh, in the consent agenda and that's our financial well-being to go along with the concerns about physical well-being going forward. That's the, that's, that's the dual conversation that occurs organizationally and individually within families. Um, and I, I just uh looking into the second half of this year, uh, and, and I think we did the right thing tonight. And again, you know, great work on that. I'm also looking to the first half of next year. And uh, I, I, you know, payment of, of real estate taxes that are included in mortgage uh payments um that are escrow are a concern. Probably 80% of, of uh mortgage payments contain escrows for taxes and insurance. And while it's not necessarily our business about, about individual properties being insured, that's the lender's concern. Certainly tax collections in the event of mortgage forbearance on the part of the lenders that goes out four to six months or longer will affect not only second half tax collections this year, which affect next year's operating budget, also the first half of next year. So I just think it's just something that is, it's important to keep in mind. It, I, I think about this a lot. A little more time on my hands these days. And so I do think about those kinds of things. Um, other thing, uh, as we, you know, looked at Weber Park and the engineering study tonight, um, the, the email that, that Ms. Wilson was referencing um, i- i- relative to special assessments. I'm just, I, I don't know, uh, cause I know that the city manager and city administration overall has been working diligently, i- i- full court press really on, on dealing with the effects of uh the coronavirus uh on the community and, and dealing with it. But um, I'm just kind of wondering where we are with the task force because that, that specter is just kind of looming over so many decisions as we go forward. And, and if tonight that update isn't available, that's okay, but it's just something to think about soon. Um, so that we're going forward on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Anderson. I think Manager Neil can cover that. On ad recently, uh, I think in the Sun this past Thursday. Letting folks know that we were looking for, for people that were interested in serving on that committee, but uh, I'm sure Manager Neil can handle that. Uh, Member Fisher?
Um, I don't have anything tonight other than um something flashed up on one of my three screens here. Um, and it was like, uh, sometimes when Nextdoor gives you a notice on your email or something, and it said something about um, delaying organics pickup. So uh, is that a message the city sent out? And I would just be curious if we could get an update on organics um this evening.
Thank you. We'll do that. Um, Member Stotan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the only thing I wanted to talk about was a little bit of something that occurred to me as we were working our way through this Hankerson issue. Um, I thought that the property owners who, by the way, are um are a really thoughtful couple of people who've been in the landscape architect business for a long time. They're kind of urban thinkers, I think, in a really good way. Um, they, they submitted a letter that I thought was really helpful. It talked about how they had gone through this process and the things they had thought about over the years. And one of the things that caught my attention was how ours, it got me thinking about how we do sketch plan. And whether that sketch plan process is helping or not, or whether we need to refine it. Because I think from their perspective, they felt like they did everything we asked at sketch plan. And even more, they brought, they brought it down a couple of units more than what we even mentioned at sketch plan. And, and then they ended up feeling like, you know, they did everything and then it didn't work. At the same time, the neighborhood felt like the decision was already made because the sketch plan had been done six months ago and this had all been talked about before we got their attention. So I don't know whether it's involving the neighborhood more in the sketch plan end of it or not doing the sketch plan until we get to the more formal part. But it feels like it's not achieving the objective that we originally designed it for, which was to give an opportunity to make some changes at a time when they hadn't cemented in their plans. And I think the problem with it is we get some wisdom, like we did in this case, from the neighborhood. And then we feel like we're applying it later. And so I, I don't know quite what to do with it, but while it was on my mind, I wanted to kind of share that. And maybe we can do some thinking about whether there's a better way to go about achieving the objectives. So that was all I had.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Um, all right, well, let's give that some thought. Um, from my point of view, uh, we've continued to do the uh mayor's minute every day. Uh, Scott Denfeld has done a wonderful job and Jennifer uh has been coming up with important content. Uh, on the technical side, as I mentioned, Scott Denfeld uh do an excellent, excellent job. Um, and then there's other activity that seems to be constantly going on. I had a conversation or part of a conversation about homelessness. An issue that we don't have to deal with, but um uh, the projection now from Minnesota Housing is, uh, and I think from Hennepin and Ramsey Counties, uh, where they're spending a significant amount of money every month housing homeless folks during the COVID crisis. Hennepin County, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five million a month and Ramsey County, 1.4 million a month. Uh, and folks are still getting sick uh in these congregate care situations. And now moving outside into um tented locations uh, where you have unstructured homelessness, unsheltered homelessness, uh, except for the tents. Uh, and they're predicting now at, uh, I think MDH that 80% of the homeless folks in the state are going to end up positive COVID. So it's really um, a difficult, difficult problem. And I think for all of us that have been seeing some pressure to reopen businesses, uh, in Minnesota, I'm seeing uh, I think cautionary sort of behavior, looking at things that make sense. Uh, this last order of the governor, uh, from a recreational standpoint, opening up things that that, that allowed people to maintain an appropriate social distance seemed like it made a lot of sense. Getting our golf course back up and operational was a real mental health boost, I think, for many, many people in our community and beyond. Uh, and also allowing some uh physical activity because of all the uh walking that you're doing out there. And I enjoyed that on Saturday, as a matter of fact. Uh, got to walk up and down the 13th, uh, uh, the 13th both twice. Because I left my golf clubs up there, two of my three golf clubs I took up there. That wasn't the journey I wanted to make, but it was wonderful to get the golf course open and people are really pleased about that. Um, well, the meetings continue, uh, uh, I was in a conversation one day with several mayors and then Melvin Carter from St. Paul's. Has had staff people get ahold of me, as I mentioned before, to some folks. Uh, and we're going to talk about uh some of the issues that are important uh to him. And he's also got uh some information on that bridge fund. I thought we should look at that bridge fund and see what they were doing in St. Paul. That um, might be important to us if we think about trying to do a a second go around on small business assistance. So I'll try to keep everybody informed on, on some of the meetings that I have. There's one tomorrow. Uh, all of you are welcome to join that one with uh Congressman Phillips. As we try to get some funding for cities, direct to cities. Uh, Pelosi and, and I think Dean Phillips is one of the co-authors on a bill that would direct money through the CDBG process, uh, directly to cities our size. Uh, and that might not come this go around, but it certainly is something that's uh in the forefront of a lot of people's minds, at least in, in the, on the congressional side of things, not on the senate side uh as much. And the MLC cities are sending in letters of support uh on that, uh, on that House bill. So those are some of the things that are, that are going on in the region and that I thought you might want to know about. And I'll certainly continue to forward things on through Jennifer Garsky that I think are relevant for reading. And I hope you all do the same thing on things that you received that you think are important for all of us to know about uh relative to this uh, this pandemic. So uh, turning to Manager Neil, you've got a few issues that you want to cover, including a, a resolution of the Oak Lane uh matter, which um, had good people on all sides of it. And thanks for being a, a great mediator there.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, let's, let's start with that. You can hear me okay, right?
Yep.
We can.
Okay. Let's start with uh Oak Lane. So I think we all know uh, that we um had a number of discussions about Oak Lane and, and we were trying to look for a way that um, everybody could uh come from, come away from that a winner of, of some sort. So uh, as we've been talking this through, we had a, a break in the impasse uh last week. And, and it really comes down to the parties all agreeing to uh, to do something, to do a few things. So the, the Elliott's would agree to sell their parcel to not pursue further development of the parcel. Uh, they are looking for a relatively quick close with the city. Uh, they've established a price of $180,000. The city would agree to pay the Elliott's $180,000 and, and do the legal and closing costs for that sale. The neighbors would agree to uh be special assessed to pay that $180,000. Um, so we have, uh, city attorney and I have shared, uh, have talked about this. We've shared special assessment agreements with uh the neighbors and uh they have committed to making this payment uh over time. Uh, the other issue involved here though is the, is the uh vacation of right of way. Uh, they have been pursuing a petition process throughout their neighborhood and, and gaining um, a lot of support for, for vacating the right of way and sort of addressing uh, uh, real estate development issues in this neighborhood for uh, for the long term. So that is working its way to you. I understand uh that they are going to file their petitions and, and the application uh for the vacation and get in front of the planning commission and the council. Uh, we should be getting that uh tomorrow. So that's kind of the, that's, that's the, that's the big picture of this agreement. Um, the Elliott's have committed to it. The neighborhood representatives have committed to it. I told both of them that I would brief you on this and uh if they saw at least four smiling faces on WebEx, uh, that we would probably move it forward from there. I see five of you. Okay. So.
I'm smiling.
Okay. So there isn't anything for you to do with this tonight, other than for me just to, to lay it out for you? It does require us to kind of get some things moving. Uh, city attorney is aware of that. And so we'll get things moving starting tomorrow. Any, any questions about any of this? Okay.
Oh.
Um, there were a couple of questions and then I'll get to a fiscal update. Uh, first of all, organics. Uh, yes, I think we issued, uh, I think we issued the, the press release on Friday, maybe, or Monday? Jennifer? I'm not sure. I can't remember which.
We issued the press release yesterday on Monday.
Yesterday, yesterday on Monday. The uh, press release that went out told uh our, uh, our customers, our residents that we have to push back the initiate, the initial pickup of organics by a month. And the reason we have to push this back by a month is that there is uh, the, the processing plants for organics uh are not open right now. Um, and because they're not open, the contractor in this case, Veer Can't, cannot collect organics and, and dispose of them at, or take them to the processing center. Uh, MPCA is working on this with the processing center and with the haulers to get them opened as soon as they can. Uh, it is COVID-19 related and that's what we know right now. So everything will be backed up by a month. So everything will be backed up by a month.
Mr. Mayor, Scott, could I chime in on that? I just want to, I just want to mention that, that is a, just in case people watching might think this is a chronic thing. I have had service from Veer Can't for organics recycling for 12 years and never has this happened before. So this is a once, this is like, this never happens. And it's just, it's just a result of an unusual and unprecedented circumstance. So for folks, I don't want anybody to come away from this thinking that this is some kind of a chronic holdup.
Right. I appreciate saying that. Let's see. Oh, the, the Task Force update. So the Task Force, Street Funding Task Force, we are currently, we are still in the recruiting phase for the Task Force right now. So if you know of someone who's interested, refer them to our website. And we are, we are taking volunteers right now. I'm not sure where I sit, how many we have in terms of volunteers, but we are still in the recruiting phase. So we're still interested in hearing from people. Yeah, was there another question? Am I missing another question? I don't think so.
I think those were the two questions that were raised. Well, the other one was Kevin's comment about Sketch Plan. Take a look at.
Thank you. That is one I was, that is what I wanted to follow up on. I think I wanted to affirm that from a staff perspective, too. I would tell you that from, from our perspective, the Sketch Plan process has evolved into something that has kind of moved it away. We think it has also moved away from its kind of initial intent and process and the value that it was for the developers in the very beginning. So I think from a staff perspective, we can bring something to that discussion as well. And have been thinking about that for a couple of years now, actually.
All right, thank you. It takes me a while, but you know, in a couple of years, it finally hits me.
Sure. All right, I want to just do a little bit of narrative for you on where we are with our fiscal status. The Council took a big step tonight in creating the Budget Stabilization Fund. The purpose of this Budget Stabilization Fund, I think it's important to talk a little bit more about why we're doing it and what we're trying to accomplish. And what we're trying to accomplish with the Budget Stabilization Fund is trying to put the city, the city council and city staff in a better position when we start talking about our 2021 budget. And we will start talking about that later this year. You know, as we've talked about the last time, normally in the second year of a two-year budget, we don't do much with it, other than fine tuning. We'll be doing a lot more than just fine tuning this year. But it's one of those items in a budget where making revisions now, especially small tangible decisions now, have a bigger payoff in the long run, right? The longer, just like save compounding interest in a savings account, making those decisions as early in a budget year as you can has the same kind of compounding benefit to you going forward. And will add more to our stabilization fund. I think it's important also to be transparent about the operating assumptions about the future in order to, that we are using to guide our decisions in the present. Saving money merely for the sake of saving money is really not the goal of the Budget Stabilization Fund. The fundamental operating scenario that I foresee for the immediate term, which I see as 2020, and leading into the short term, which is '21 through '23, is a scenario I call the slow freeze scenario. In this scenario, I see property tax rates being frozen and the development economy really slowing down, which is similar to what we saw in the Great Recession. This scenario assumes that our city, that our city will freeze its 2021 property tax levy and service levels at 2020 levels and that our development revenues drop by 50%. So those two things are what we are modeling to see how they impact our operating budgets and our operating revenues. And that's kind of what's forming the basis of our Budget Stabilization Fund estimates. Those two items together account for about a $5 million fiscal impact to our general fund. And that's where the $5 million goal comes from for our stabilization fund. In the immediate future, I think it's important for us to be as prudent as possible to preserve our service taxing and spending options for the short term, which is the next three years after that. Property taxes paid, it's important to remember that property taxes paid in 2020 are based on the estimated market value of property on January 2, 2019, which was based on the relatively strong economy of 2018. So property taxes based on that 2019 estimated market value are going to feel a little out of sync for property taxpayers now because of the current economic weakness. And that's one of the issues that we're going to, we're going to have to address because it's more than just a perception. They're going to feel it. This is likely, we think, to cause public pressure on city officials to reduce property tax burdens by reducing property tax levies. The first opportunity for the city to reduce property tax levies is 2021. And the first action that you'll have to be able to do that is in September, when we set our preliminary levy. This is why we think we must moderate our property tax burden by reducing property tax levies and replacing it with other revenue sources, such as revenue from our Budget Stabilization Fund. As city government professionals, we all understand that 18 to 24-month lag that's built into our property tax valuation and levy cycle in that it works for the benefit of local governments. If you know when and where to look, you can see what's coming for you and you can plan for it. And I think that's what we owe our taxpayers and that's what we owe everybody that works for the city as well. We can see it coming, we know what's coming, we need to act accordingly. Another thing we can do that's going to help us more accurately predict this kind of near future is to look back in recent history to similar shocks in our system. So if we examine, for example, the Great Recession, it began in the U.S. officially in December 2007 and lasted until June of 2009, so approximately 19 months. Its impact on estimated market values and property taxes in Minnesota, however, didn't really show up in our property tax systems until late 2009 and into 2010. Many of us could see what was coming and we developed fiscal responses before they were necessary. And that was important in carrying those cities through a pretty rough patch. But it's important to know the lag works both ways. So it gives us time to plan on the front end, but it also drags us out on the back end. So going back to the Great Recession example, as the private sector economy begins to recover, the property tax and valuation cycle lags on the negative, lags and negatively impacts property values for four more years in that case. In this case, the value of Edina's median single-family home peaked before the Great Recession at $444,000 in 2008. Starting in 2009, the median single-family home went down every year for five straight years until it bottomed out in 2013 at $396,000. Starting in 2014, the median single-family home value rose, rose in value every year since then until its current value of $548,000 in 2020. So we're on a hot streak. But it took, it took Edina until 2016 for that median single-family home to reach a value that was at or above its previous high mark in 2008. And I think that's the kind of phenomenon we need to think about as we're planning our budgets into the future and into this next couple of budget cycles. Current economic weakness will negatively impact 2020 property values. This will negatively impact the city's 2021 estimated market value, which will negatively impact the city's property taxes payable in 2022. Again, the lag and how it affects us going forward. If the, if the economy and the real estate markets begin to recover in 2021, we really won't see the evidence in terms of our property taxes payable until 2023 at the earliest. If the city's general fund spending goes, levels go up as estimated market value goes down, that we will appear to property taxpayers as if we are increasing their property tax burden. We've talked before about this idea of wind chill in our property tax system. That's wind chill, right? When our spending levels are the same or going up and property values are the same or going down, it's, things are going in the wrong direction and people will notice that immediately. So as we think about going forward, we did a pretty big move tonight to sort of sweep together a lot of money and put that into our Budget Stabilization Fund. But there is, and we needed counsel to do that in some of those cases because they were reserves. But there's other examples of things that we're going to do that we can do as staff and that we don't need counsel action on, such as we're going to move forward with reducing travel and training budgets from $220,000 to $170,000 in 2020 for a savings of $50,000. We're going to reduce our 2020 overtime budgets and save $110,000. We're going to cancel a staffing study in our Public Works Department and save $30,000. We're going to reduce building maintenance costs, contract costs and save $25,000. We're going to hold five full-time positions open for the balance of this year, and that saves $300,000. We're going to eliminate some seasonal interns and seasonal employees in our park maintenance area to save $125,000. Those are just some examples of when we put all of those together, the actions that the Council approved tonight and the staff actions that we're going to move forward with, that alone gets us right up to our $5 million threshold. And I think that, that amount is sufficient to initially fund that Budget Stabilization Fund, but it's step one, and step one doesn't mean you're done. It just means there are coming steps. It's just leading us to more steps. So the next step in our analysis is to do a deeper analysis of all of our recreation enterprises. So Braemar Golf, Braemar Arena, Aquatic Center, Centennial Lake Park, Edinburgh Park, Art Center in Edina Liquor. Perry Vetter and his team in Parks and Rec and Don Yurim and his team in Finance have worked really carefully to produce a sophisticated modeling of those enterprises that allows us to test different operating scenarios and predict their impacts on our budgets. We know, for example, that if we assumed projected revenues, so not budgeted revenues, but projected revenues, where we think they are going to land from now until the end of the year. And we pair that with budgeted expenses for the balance of the year, we will end the year with an operating deficit in our, you know, collective operating deficit in our enterprises of $5 million. That's the impact of the shortfall that we're seeing in revenues compared to what we budgeted for in expenses. And we clearly aren't going to do that. That's not a plausible or feasible scenario, but it's the kind of scenario that we can test to see what the parameters are of our discussion and our analysis and most importantly, our options. So the modeling work that we're doing on our recreation enterprises is going to help us make some important decisions, some value judgments. And some of those policy decisions are going to be decisions that we need to get counsel input on at the very least. And so we're working on that data right now. There's a lot of data involved in making these decisions. We want to get these right because making these decisions for the future on inaccurate information is going to produce outcomes that none of us are going to be satisfied with. I know that you are hearing from people in the community that would like the city to shut down or to divert city resources to charitable or philanthropic organizations. I think it's important for you as elected officials to listen to those pleas. But it's also important to keep in mind that the important role that city government plays in a number of different roles in the community, some of which get more robust during economic downturns. So reducing, cutting and deferring our work plans into the future is not going to be the right answer most of the time. Sometimes maybe, but most of the time not. Staff works daily with an operating assumption that if an operating expense program, project or equipment is included in the city's budget, we assume it's important because it was approved by the city council. That doesn't mean that we're on autopilot by any means, but it does mean that our understanding and discretion always bends towards plans and documents that have been reviewed and approved by the Council. So my final plan tonight, and I'll be happy to answer questions after this, is really, my final comments are about approach. My approach to this challenge will be grounded in prudence and stewardship. Those two words are important to me. As I said at our April 7 meeting, Edina's got a lot of resources that are going to help us emerge from this pandemic successfully. One of our most valuable resources we have right now is some time. We have time to reposition our city's operations in humanely, as humanely and rationally as possible in response to the challenges from the pandemic. We want to use that time, do it right, and to do it in a manner that's effective and respectful to all concerned. So that's my fiscal update for you tonight. The thing that you will see next from us in terms of numbers are some of the modeling that we're going to do on our Park and Rec Enterprises. And it's, and it's very possible, we'll show you some of that at our May 7, or May 5 Council meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that comprehensive update. Questions, comments? Member Fisher?
Well, I'm just going to throw out, you know, you hit on this, you know, we get lots of ideas and comments from people. And there's a, I saw something, I don't even remember where I saw it, but sort of comparing Edina Municipal Liquor Stores to Richfield and other neighboring communities. And they said that other liquor stores are having record sales. Why isn't Edina opening their stores? I'm assuming it's because we're trying to be good examples of what we're trying to do out there. And we've got free delivery, which is the absolute best way to safely take care of people's consumer needs. And I don't know if you want to address any of that.
Yeah, we, we do have quite a number of discussions with our peers in municipal liquor cities and non-municipal liquor cities. I don't think anybody's having record years in terms of their municipal liquor operations. When we first started, when everybody closed down and we were the only game in town and we were doing home delivery, we were on a record pace for a couple of days, too. But that has calmed down right now. And we are trying to do the best, the best approach to this, too, in terms of converting our systems to home delivery. We are still, though, continuing to look at whether or not we need to add a store component back to our operations, too. But that's what we would say. We're happy to share the data that we collect because it's public data. And whether we share it with the public or we share it with you, we'd be happy to do that.
So this year is a...
Scott, that one of the reasons that we've been so effective on the home delivery is because we spent a year getting that system put in place and others don't have that type of system put in place.
That is true. It took, it took a while to work the bugs out of that, out of the home delivery system for municipal liquor. And so we were, we were one of the first, if not the first, to do it on a mass scale. So that you could not only, you could order it online and it could be delivered to you without having to physically talk to a person. You could do the ordering, the payment and the delivery all in one move.
So this is a CIP year?
It is.
And looking at the CIP, 2019 to 2023, I think that's the current CIP that we're working under. So I don't know when we're going to start talking about this, but would it be wise for us as council members to look through the CIP and look for things that maybe flag some things that we might suggest be considered to be delayed to another time? We did this when we were in the Great Recession. There were things that were put on the back burner for that time. And it might be a good exercise to at least come prepared to talk about a few things that maybe have a high price tag. Maybe they don't, but if they can be delayed, at least bring it up to be talked about.
Sure. I think, Councilmember Brindle, most of, a lot of those projects that are in the plan but are not funded. um, they all kind of roll forward and, and, and seek funding again. Um, so in, in terms of projects that you have heard of or seen, uh, that's a good, that is a good resource to find those. The new projects uh that haven't been proposed yet, I haven't seen them. They're, they will start kind of working their way to uh through, up through their departments and through the finance department. Um, I, I think in the late May, early June, that's kind of when that process goes forward. But in terms of, of things that are out there that aren't, that are kind of queued up for a year or two in the future, this would be a good time to do that.
Okay.
Can I, uh, Jennifer, can you put up the slide that I wanted to show them? Possibly. It's not very visible, is it? This, this was the slide I, I quoted from a little bit ago where it shows you um sort of the impacts of pre-Great Recession, post-Great Recession on, on the median single-family home, which is one of our key, which is one of our key um taxation metrics. Can you go to the next slide, please? So this is a, this is also an interesting slide in that this is a bar graph showing the annual rate of increase of our property tax levy. And you can see what it was in 2010. And that was, this helps illustrate uh the lag, right? So in 2010, the city was still able to uh have a property tax increase of, of 5% or so. But starting in 2011, this was happened to be my first budget year here, 2011. Um, those first four years were, were somewhat lean is because that uh, that's when the, the property tax uh valuation lag really started to lean on us those four years. Go to the next slide, please. This is a comparison um between two cities. Um Bloomington, which has a, this is a tax-based comparison uh by net tax capacity. And so Bloomington has a net tax capacity of 196 million in 2020. Edina has a net tax capacity of 166 million. This is the, this is the number that we actually calculate our property taxes on. And I'm comparing residential CI and then apartment non-homestead between the two cities. It's an interesting comparison because you can see how much our uh residential component is greater than Bloomington's. But then you also get to see how important the CI component, the commercial industrial uh component is in Bloomington compared to Edina. Um, one of the things that I think is going to be interesting for, for our two cities is that it's my opinion that, that commercial industrial property value is going to be hit harder uh by what we're seeing in the economy right now than the residential piece. So the big piece of Bloomington's uh tax base is I think is going to be more volatile than the big piece of, of Edina's going forward in the next couple of years. And that's all, Jen, can you can take, you can take those down? And that's all I got.
One of the other, one of the other observations uh you've had regarding Bloomington uh stems from the fact that they've had such significant reliance in their general fund on hotel tax revenue. And I think it's about 500,000 a month and of course occupants' rates are so low now that they're, they're, uh, they've got to be significantly impacted there. And I'm sure that's causing all kinds of budgetary challenges for them.
It, it does. Uh, Bloomington at its peak had lodging taxes, um, collected more lodging taxes in a month than we collected in a year. And they use their lodging taxes to fund part of their city government operations. And so uh, they had a, a close connection uh between people actually working for the city and, and the lodging tax as a source of revenue. We don't have that close connection. We collect our lodging tax and it's a pass-through uh straight to the Chamber of Commerce that operates our Convention Visitors Bureau. Now, they strongly rely on that revenue source and they uh are feeling some pain for that right now. And uh uh, Mayor Hovland and I were on a call with them today as they, as we approved their application for uh a loan to get uh the uh paycheck protection program dollars. But um yeah, that, that's creating some difficulties at the chamber, but for us, it doesn't create a big difficulty because we don't spend that money ourselves.
Have you got any, uh, have you had any conversations with Simon or the owners of um the Galleria regarding the impact on, on them? Thinking about also for Bloomington, the Mall of America, that they have a significant investment in, uh, in different ways and potential impact both on them and on us frankly with Saltdale and the Galleria shuttered.
Well, um, our staff certainly has had a lot of conversations with Simon and with the major uh commercial property, commercial real estate owners uh already this spring. Uh, the first Board of Appeal and Equalization uh meeting is tomorrow. Um, uh, Councilmember Anderson might remember what that was, was like. He was on that board for a while. It's going to be an interesting experience tomorrow, but uh the commercial real estate folks will be the very first people that are hit. Uh, I believe by changes in property value as the folks that they are renting to stop paying their rent. Um, they will then approach us for uh changes in, or decreases in value so that we can decrease their, their tax load for their building. So I think that's coming and we're, we believe we'll see the first uh elements of that uh tomorrow.
I would actually expect that the, uh, do you, do you know what the number of appeals that has been made so far?
So far in writing, uh, they have received, I checked with them today, it's somewhere less than 20.
Mm-hmm.
Which is lower than, which is lower than what we've had in other years.
Lower than average.
Lower than
I served on that board as dur, during the Great Recession. And it, it, the, the, the volume of appeals, I think, I think there was one year that we were well over 100, although many of those were handled on a staff level. But still significant and, and people will be very concerned about it. So you're, that's a very accurate statement.
One of the other observations I recall from the area, the era of the Great Recession was uh, we expected some uh fairly high rate of mortgage foreclosure, but we didn't have it because I think so many and, and Ron Anderson may have some insight on this too, but I think there are so many folks in Edina that have their homes paid off uh with being a little bit older community that, and we didn't see a high foreclosure rate. And I think, in fact, I think we maybe saw the lowest rate of foreclosure in the metro uh on homes in Edina during the Great Recession.
That's, that's probably accurate. Also, interestingly enough, that was the beginning of this, of the teardown uh phenomena that occurred here. Uh, between 2000, I want to say between 2009 and 2018, as you know, about 822 teardowns. And, and one of the reasons for that, I think, is a little more sluggish market with, with valuations that had begun to erode and a lot of single-family builders saying this is probably the time to move into that market. And they did so, did so effectively and have raised our tax base remarkably. So I, it's just interesting. There's, any, any, every pro has a con attached to it. And I think, I think in the end, if we're careful, I think in the end we'll find the pros that are attached to this time.
Other questions for Manager Neil? Comments? It was a very comprehensive uh report. Very well done. Thank you. And thanks to our finance department too that worked with you, I'm sure, and Lisa Schaefer as well. Um, anything further from council members? And Manager Neil, anything further?
Nothing from me.
Okay. All right. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Second.
A motion and second uh to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call, please. Ms. Ellison?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Stoughton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, folks. Good work tonight. Really interesting uh observation on the part of everybody. Really appreciated it. Thank you very much.